Good morning. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Board of Supervisors for August 1st, 2017. But first of all, I'd like to share with you that this meeting is being also conducted via teleconference at the WGA Marriott Washington DC Hotel Lobby located at 1331 Peninsula Avenue, Northwest Washington District of Columbia. This teleconference site was also noticed on the Board of Supervisors' agenda. So we have our Supervisor Kelly Long as visiting with us or participating with us, excuse me, out of Washington DC. So, real call?
Supervisor Foy. Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
And Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here. Thank you. Please join me in saluting our flag.
I am pleased to be here. It's due to the flag of the United States of America and to the United States of America stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Our next item in the agenda is the minutes of the County of Ventura and Special Districts for July 25th. It's a pleasure of the Board. Okay. Get a first and a second. Please vote.
Yes.
Okay. Got a yes from Supervisor Long. Okay. Agenda review, Michael.
Thank you, Chair Zaragoza. Board members, we do have quite a few items this morning. Item 14, CEO's Office: Approval of a Contract for Temporary Employment Services with 22nd Century Technologies Inc. Revised Exhibit 1 has been submitted. Item 17, District Attorney: Adoption of a Resolution Authorizing the DA to Execute a Grant Agreement for Victim Advocacy and Outreach. A revised resolution has been submitted. Item 22, Healthcare Agency: Approval of the Sales Ordering Providing Software and Services to Support New Meaningful Use Objectives with Sterner Corp. A board letter and exhibit 1 have been submitted. Item 31, Healthcare: Approval of Agreements for Collection of Services for Delinquent Self-Pay, Workers' Compensation, and Third-Party Liability Claims. A revised exhibit 1 has been submitted. Item 33, Healthcare Agency, BCMC: Approval of the Bylaws and Org Chart for the Community Health Center Board and Approval of Agreements and Policies. Board letter and exhibits 1 through 8 have been submitted. Item 40, Public Works Agency: Approval of the Final Map for Track Number 5553 in Piru. Request this item to be heard as a regular agenda item, the first regular agenda item, that's item 40. Item 52, Treasury Tax Collector: Adoption of a Resolution Approving the Sale of Tax-Defaulted Property to the City of Thousand Oaks. Revised Exhibit 2 has been submitted. Item 54, Human Services Agency: Receive and File a Presentation on the Ventura County's Self-Assessment of Children and Family Services. A PowerPoint has been submitted. Item 57, Public Works: Public Hearing Regarding Adoption of Resolutions Increasing Capital Improvement Charges and Amending Rules and Regulations for Water District Numbers 1, 17, 19, and 38. Exhibits 1, 1A, and Resolutions have been submitted. Item 58, Public Works Agency: Public Hearing Regarding Increasing Miscellaneous Fees for Staff Services and Revising and Amending Rules and Regulations for Waterworks District Numbers 1, 16, 17, 19, and 38. Exhibits 1, 1A, and Resolutions have been submitted. Item 59: Receive and File Report with Further Analysis Regarding Allowing Land Conservation Act Contracts on Land-Zoned Open Space. Request removal from the agenda. That's item 59. Item 60, Healthcare Agency, BCMC: Approval of the Healthcare Agency Discount Payment Policy and Charity Care Policy. Board letter and exhibits 1 through 5 have been submitted. Item 62, CEO's Office: Approval of the Response to the 2016-17 Grand Jury Reports. Revised Board Letter and Revised Exhibits 1 through 2 have been submitted. Item 63, Public Works: Approval of a General Fund Loan to Waterworks District Number 16 in an Amount Up to $2 Million. A board letter has been submitted. Addendum Agenda. There's Consent Agenda. Item 68, CEO's Office: Adoption of a Resolution Authorizing the County of Ventura to Act as the Administrative Entity for Fiscal Year 2017-18 State Emergency Solutions Grant Program Funding. Item 69, CEO's Office: Approval of an Amendment to the Sustainability Fee Memorandum of Agreement Between the County of Ventura and the City of Moore Park Extending by 90 Days to December 30, 2017, the Deadline for the Acquisition of Open Space Property. And finally, Item 70, Healthcare Agency, BCMC: Approval of Various Contract Amendments. And that's it.
Any other amendments?
No, I think that's it.
Thank you. Let me assess. Did you say something on 59?
Yes, request removal from the agenda.
Removal, yes. Okay, well, thank you so much. So we need an approval on these items or any additional information from the Board of Supervisors?
On item 52, which is the tax defaulted property, I've got my question answered here, I believe. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, Supervisor.
Item 52. Okay. All righty. And...
Let me move the agenda.
Move the agenda, okay. Get a first and a second. Please vote.
Supervisor Long?
Supervisor Long?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you hear us, Supervisor Long?
I got it, yes.
Oh, got it? Okay.
Yes, fine. How do I mute?
Okay. Thank you. So that's been approved. Okay. Our next item is a moment of inspiration, and we have a young lady that's going to help us this morning. Catherine Taylor, and here accompanied by her mom and dad, Mike and Casey Taylor. So Catherine?
Hello?
Yes.
Good day to you all. My name is Catherine Taylor, and I would like to take a moment to inspire you all with a poem I have written about my personal dreams and aspirations as an individual living with autism, one of many living in Ventura County. I am an artist, not a stigma of a label or a diagnosis, but an artist. Now, the clinical diagnoses are attempting to fit in to the artist realm, for we as artists have already achieved fitting into the artist realm. Once upon a time, I was taught that sticks and stones, sorry, once upon a time I was taught that labels were pretty things, like flower pots and makeup kits and jewelry boxes, not human beings, even though human beings were also pretty things. Once upon a time, I was also taught that sticks and stones can break one's bones, but names and stigmas can truly hurt a person. Therefore, if you do label my very name sake, please do so by calling me an artist. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, and I really appreciate that. Put your hands up. Thank you. You know, Catherine is an inspiration to all of us. You know, she has autism, and she's really done great, you know, and I will thank the parents and all the folks that you support. Thank you for being here this morning. Just give her another hand. Okay. Consent Items, 11 through 52. And I'd like to share that with the Board that I'm going to have to recuse myself from item 44 for a possible conflict of interest.
Can I pull 36?
And pull 37?
36.
36, okay.
And also pull 40.
And pull 44 for a regular agenda item?
40.
Forty, forty. Four zero.
One second.
Okay, so...
One second.
So we go ahead and take the items first that... Except for item 30, 40, and 30. You want to do 36 now?
Yeah, whatever you do. I mind any time.
Also, item 26, just to, I think it's really loud along, would like to hear a little bit of it if you can.
Okay, so we'll take that first then.
I'll move the rest of the consent calendar that hasn't been pulled.
Okay. Except, and then I'll recuse myself from 32.
So... Yes. So, sir, the motion is if you're approving consent, it's 11 through 25, 27 through 35, 37 through 39, 41 through 52, and 68 through 70.
And do you have a speaker?
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, and we do have a speaker in 13 before we...
We have a speaker in 13. So should I remove? I'll hold myself from 44 now.
Just do 13 for now.
I'll hold the vote until we have a speaker.
Okay, yeah, we have a speaker on item 13 is David Araho. Dr. Araho.
David.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm here to speak in support of item number 13 on the consent agenda. My name is David Araho. I'm the Program Director of the Family Medicine Residency Program at BCMC. I've brought today with me Dr. Cheryl Lambing, who's one of our core faculty members, and then also Dr. Heather Nenning and Annie Chang, who are residents in the residency program. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for your continued support of the residency program over the many years. As some of you will know, and some of you may not know, the residency program has been here for close to 50 years. 2018 will be our 50th anniversary, and we hope to have a celebration next year. And several years ago, we were voted the number-one program in the United States, and you guys recognized us several years ago, and I want to thank you again for that. Your continued support of the program is necessary for us to continue to attract good applicants from across the country, and we appreciate your support in that regard. And I also want to thank Mike Powers for his pushing forward with his resolution to amend the salaries for the residency program, and appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Okay.
Thank you, Doctor, for doing all the work you do.
Absolutely, yeah. Next one.
I just want to make a quick comment that attracting the, you know, Dr. Araho talked about attracting good candidates, and I think we're attracting the best candidates in the United States, and I want to make sure that we continue to do that, and this is certainly one of the things that we need to do to be able to keep attracting the best candidates out there. We're going to have a crisis in, certainly in family medicine in the future, and Ventura County can go a long ways to insulate itself from that by having this great residency program and getting people here in the first place.
On the drive up today, I heard the 100,000 doctors in the next 12, 14 years. A lot of doctor deaths.
And when you add to that, this is a public county hospital that has one of the best residency programs in the nation. I think that says a lot about our county.
And thank you, Doctor, on your side, for excellent work. Thank you so much.
Yeah, it's great leadership, and it is so competitive. I think for 15 slots every year, there's about 1,000 applications from all over the nation. So they get the best and the brightest, and they are incredibly passionate, mission-driven doctors, and we're very fortunate. Thank you for being here today.
So we're seeing some of the best and the brightest out there, right? That's good.
So, one second, sir. Again, we're going to approve the consent agenda and its items, 11 through 25, 27 through 35, 37 through 39, 41 through 43, 45 through 52, 68 through 70.
Okay.
Can you do that by memory?
I'll remember all that.
So I'm going to remove myself for item... One second, sir. One second. If I can get Supervisor Foy to vote on consent, and Supervisor Long?
Long.
Yes.
Said yes?
You vote yes?
Yes.
And now, sir, what item are we going to that you're recusing yourself from?
44.
44.
And I'm removing myself of potential conflict of interest. I have some property in that location.
And Supervisor Long, for item 44, how do you vote?
Um, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. So shall we go to 26? That was polled for something.
26, Supervisor Parks.
Item 26 is regarding the reuse, oh, great, Ferguson's here.
Good morning, Chair, and I will throw members of the Board. Mr. Powers?
Good morning.
Public Health Director. This item before you is to ratify the submission of a grant application that we turned into the Cal Recycle Program at the state, and it would be to work in partnership with several community organizations to recover food, especially hot food, that is currently going to waste in various settings, cafeterias, both at school and other settings, restaurants especially, and we would be working with our colleagues at the Environmental Health Division to develop a pilot project where safety guidelines and outreach would be, a program would be developed so that we can recover and distribute these additional food items in order to feed the hungry, but also reduce waste in our landfill.
Just, I'm really glad to see this, and I think if, with this grant, we would be able to certainly divert a lot of food waste, but also use it for the fresh food for people who don't have food, and then also, I think, all the way down the food chain to even animals, where they can make, like, flakes out of it, but the idea that we've just been throwing this away when it can be reused is something that needs to be fixed, and really glad to see you moving forward on this.
Thank you.
Let me ask, weren't we doing some of this before, anyway? There's some organizations that go out and get food. Is this just expanding that to, what, the hot food, or what is, is that what it is, all the hot food?
Yeah, it's mainly focused on additional venues for recovery of food, and especially focusing on hot food items. And we would model our pilot project over, on a project in Orange County that has been very successful, and so we would be learning from how they set up their program, and it is an expansion of the food recovery efforts currently in Ventura County.
Okay, that sounds great. So we go...
Very good. Thanks.
My understanding is that normally we waste about 40% of the food that's served in restaurants and so forth. Is that about right?
It's been out there, that figure, but it's definitely a large amount. It would be working with as many venues as possible to recover as much food as we can, yes.
So this is really going to help us tremendously?
Yes.
I just, I heard a presentation from a young woman out of Berkeley, and she had taken a homeless veteran to lunch, and while she was sitting there, she's watching the store across the street dumping into this dumpster, and she came up with this idea, company that she formed called Copia, but what it does is it takes the fresh foods from banquets and even the Academy Award leftovers, lait mignon, and being able to have trucks available that can, you know, quickly refrigerate it and keep it fresh and get it to people who are starving. It's just like, she refers to it as solving one of the world's dumbest problems, you know, that we should have this abundance of food and not being able to share. So this is just a great program. I hope we're successful.
Okay, thank you. So...
For bringing that up, Linda, it was good to highlight that.
So we'll vote on that item separately, okay? We get a motion? Second? Please vote.
Long vote, yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes. Thank you, Supervisor. Our next item is item 36. Supervisor Foy.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring this up and vote on this. This is raising the landfill fees or something in our landfills, and I'm just curious. I know it's, this, we're supposed to be in a situation where government pays for itself, and I know years ago, we were told, why you raise these? Well, because we can. We have our option to do that. I mean, we're making extra millions of dollars off our landfills right now, which is wonderful, but I just don't see why the average citizen needs to pay more for their landfills. It's not affecting us. It's not like we have additional costs, or I don't see, unless I'm missing something, so... Unless you want to answer that question? It's pretty straightforward, because we can, right?
Pretty much. The Board agreed many years ago to apply the fee and to have the revenue go to general fund.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't want to put you in a hotspot, but I mean, that's just what it is and what you have to deal with, so I just don't see it as something we should do, so I just want to vote on some...
But doesn't the surcharge help us out for different programs, like the recycling program, the awards program, and the other programs that we...
Well, it goes to general fund.
Cleanup?
And at the discretion of the CEO.
And the cleanup programs too, right? We have neighborhood cleanups.
No.
That's not part of it?
Not from this revenue source, no.
All righty. Okay, so let's, need a motion? And a second? Please vote.
Long vote, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay, and that's approved. Thank you. Our next item, we're going to take item 40. Regular item, item 40?
Yes, please.
First one. We're going to take it. Okay.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, members of the Board, CEO Mike Powers. For the record, my name is Chris Cooper with the Public Works Agency. With you, before you today is track 5553 for the approval of the tentative, or approval of the final track map. This development is known as the Piru Gateway Subdivision. In December of 2008, the tentative track map was brought before the Board of Supervisors and approved. This trap will provide 91 dwelling units, a 1.1 acre park, a detention basin for the percolation of stormwater for the groundwater recharge, and widening of the roadway and sidewalk improvements along Main Street. For your Board's information, the developer has satisfied all pre-recordation conditions of the vesting track map and all the requirements and procedures for recordation of the final track map. Approval of the final track map by the Board of Supervisors is a ministerial act because all pre-map recordation conditions have been satisfied to date. With me today is Anitha Ballin from the Transportation Department and Public Works Agency, and Kim Pearlheart from Resource Management Agency. They'll be able to answer questions with regards, Kim will be able to answer questions with regards to the EIR and the conditions of development, and Anitha can address any questions in regard to Main Street and the sidewalk improvements and associated easements for that. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Okay. I don't have any speakers in this item, so what we do?
Um, so there's no comments. Can I just make a statement?
Okay. Okay, I have a speaker card.
Okay.
You want to hear the comments first, or you want to...
Yes, please.
Okay, the item that we have here is, or the speaker card, excuse me, is from Maria Ventura.
Good morning. My name is Maria Ventura, and I am the Public Affairs Manager for SoCal Gas here in Ventura County. Thank you, Ventura County Board of Supervisors and County staff, for the opportunity to provide comments related to final track map approval of 553 located in the northeast corner of Main Street and State Highway 126 in Piru. First, let me say SoCal Gas is not opposed to this development at this time. However, per our letter submitted on 7/25/17, SoCal Gas has some concerns with the proposed development. As late as 7/28, I met with County Planning Department and Developer to discuss this issue. SoCal Gas is working in good faith to try to find resolution. One of our concerns is SoCal Gas was not adequately contacted to provide comments to the Piru Area Plant Update Draft EIR. The county mailed the notification letter to an incorrect address. SoCal Gas prides itself on a culture of safety. This facility is safe. Our concerns are potential impacts to residents of the development. We request that the final track map approval be pulled and postponed to a later date so SoCal Gas can fully examine all alternatives and potential mitigation measures. Please be assured SoCal Gas is fully engaged with this issue and wants the best outcome for all parties. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask you a real quick question?
Sure.
We talked today, and I didn't ask you this, but is there a leak detection and automatic shut-off system to the gas company transmission and all that with the station? That's already in place in this whole thing right now?
So I'm going to have to defer and get that answer back. I don't have subject matter experts with me at this time. Today I was prepared to provide a statement, but we can get that information.
Okay, great. Supervisor Long, you have any... Supervisor, can you hear us?
Yes, I hit the mute button. If we could have Ms. Pearlheart speak on that matter, I think she could answer Supervisor Foy's question.
Okay, Kim. Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Powers, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Kim Pearlheart. I'm the Planning Director for the County of Ventura. I'm not sure Supervisor Foy or Long that I have an absolute clear answer for you on that, but what I have is a matter of the record. So I did meet with Maria on Friday and explained to her since 2004 to as recently as the meeting that we had with three Southern California Gas Company staff on June 29, 2017, over the years, we've met with at least 12 representatives from Southern California Gas on this project, including site visits, and so the, there's been an awful lot of information in the record, all which I provided to Maria, that's saying Southern California Gas has been a partner in this project since day one. To the issue of the shut-off valve, so there is an EIR that was prepared. There was quite a lengthy study that was prepared on this particular item alone, this facility alone. The county engaged in a RFP for a contract and hired a firm that just studied the safety of this issue, and they came out with three mitigation measures. One was to establish a buffer, and establish of that buffer would have resulted in 80 residences not being constructed. So they had two other alternatives, to move the gas company facility or to add a leak detection system and automatic shutdown system to the facility. So those became mitigation measures, and those mitigation measures are required to be done prior to them building any stick buildings, any single-family residence, so they can grade out there, but they have to settle this issue with whether the valves are on there or not, or whether the appropriate shut-off is on there or not, or whether they need to move the facility. So this action that the Boards takes today, this ministerial action to approve the map, does not negate the developer or Southern California Gas with coming to a conclusion or a resolution on how that's met. So in looking through the record, and I had that very same question on June 29, so I asked the applicant and the developer to schedule a meeting with the people in the know at Southern California Gas, so I could hear it directly from them, and those three people in the meeting, Omar Miranda, Tom Kaufman, Mark Amarilla, said that they believed the appropriate conditions, the appropriate valves were on that facility, but it would take a while to get that letter from Southern California Gas. And in looking through the record, the county, there's a record of the county continually reaching out to Southern California Gas, saying, please participate in the EIR process. Please tell us if you have any issues. Please review this report. Right, so it's not been easy from the record over the last 13 years to get Southern California Gas at the table, and now that they're here, it's really years too late. The redesign that they're looking at or wanting was something that the Board already approved in 2008. So the decision before you is this ministerial decision to approve the map because the Board already agreed to the project, already certified the EIR, and now it's just meeting the mitigation measures. So there's mitigation measures that need to be resolved at every step of the way, prior to the map recording. That's what we're here for today. Those have been done, prior to grading. Most of those have been done, prior to development. So the applicant still has hurdles to get through, so this is a hurdle that they will have to address with Southern California Gas before they get a zoning clearance to start construction.
Kelly, if I just may comment to Kim. I appreciate that, because I believe that has been done or is being done or whatever, because also Marie called me yesterday, and I talked with her, and she said this isn't a safety issue, and that would be a safety issue, so they have no safety issue. So I imagine that's all done, I believe. I appreciate that, those explanations, so thank you.
So, Kelly, Kim, so they did receive the EIR, you know, one of the concerns was that...
They did receive the EIR, and that, you know, and the notice on that, saying nine years later that they didn't receive it. I mean, they have it, it's a public document. It was publicly noticed in the paper, which is the requirement, so clearly we tried to reach out. We had an address for the, for the seven people that we were working with at the time, right? And so they were fully engaged with that process.
The concern was that it was sent to the wrong address, but they did get the, that's what I heard, anyway, but...
They've been involved.
I think we see that a lot. Some things go to the wrong end, or somebody moves, but it seems like these projects always still, people get, if that, they want to know, they'll be involved, so...
But this is a ministerial process.
or a resolution on how that's met. So in looking through the record, and I had that very same question on June twenty-ninth, so I asked the applicant and the developer to schedule a meeting with the people in the know at Southern California Gas, so I could hear it directly from them. And those three people in the meeting, Omar Miranda, Tom Kaufman, Mark Amorilla, said that they believed the appropriate conditions, the appropriate valves were on that facility, but it would take a while to get that letter from Southern California Gas. And in looking through the record, the county, there's a record of the county continually reaching out to Southern California Gas, saying, please participate in the EIR process, please tell us if you have any issues, please review this report, right? So it's not been easy from the record over the last thirteen years to get Southern California Gas at the table, and now that they're here, it's really years too late. The redesign that they're looking at or wanting was something that the board already approved in two thousand eight. So the decision before you is this ministerial decision to approve the map because the board already agreed to the project, already certified the EIR, and now it's just meeting the mitigation measures. So there's mitigation measures that need to be resolved at every step of the way, prior to the map recording, that's what we're here for today. Those have been done, prior to grading, most of those have been done, prior to development. So the applicant still has hurdles to get through, so this is a hurdle that they will have to address with Southern California Gas before they get a zoning clearance to start construction.
Kelly, if I just may comment to Kim, I appreciate that because I believe that has been done, or is being done, or whatever, because also Marie called me yesterday and I talked with her, and she said this isn't a safety issue, and that would be a safety issue, so they have no safety issue.
Right.
So I imagine that's all done, Kelly, but I appreciate that, those explanations. So thank you.
Kelly, Kim, so they did receive the EIR, you know, one of the concerns was that there was-
They did receive the EIR, and the, you know, and the notice on that saying nine years later that they didn't receive it. I mean, they have it, it's a public document, it was publicly noticed in the paper, which is the requirement, so clearly we tried to reach out, we had an address for the, for the seven people that we were working with at the time, right? And so they were fully engaged with that process.
The concern was that it was sent to the wrong address, but they did get the, that's what I heard anyway, but-
They've been involved.
I think we see that a lot, some things go to the wrong address, somebody moves, but it seems like these projects always still, people get, if that, they want to know, they'll be involved, so I-
But this is a ministerial process more than anything else.
This is a ministerial process.
I have a couple of questions and thoughts.
Supervisor Parks.
Regardless of the fact of whether, how we got today with the gas company being concerned about the project because of its facility, just kind of put that in the past, my understanding the concern would result in an odor nuisance to residents of the new tract. And whether it has been adequately studied or not, or there's been input to that, if that is what the gas company believes is going to be the end result, I think it behooves us to give some time for the gas company to find a way so that the new residents won't be impacted with this odor nuisance. So with that, if there isn't any legal requirement to approve it today, I would like to see what they come up with.
And I would, I would offer to you there Supervisor Parks, that there was an odor health impacts assessment done, and all of the odor issues were studied in the EIR, and there is correspondence back and forth with SoCal Gas on the odor issue, and the report said, and there's residences seventy-one feet from that facility right now, right? So there's been a whole study on the odor issue, saying really it's imperceptible unless they're doing maintenance, and then it may be perceptible from a matter of seconds to minutes. So they've studied that issue already in detail.
Thank you.
Supervisor Long?
Correct, yes, incorrect, I wanted to just make sure I am correct on this, Kim, is the fact that today's ministerial approval of this map, which is very key, still has given Southern California Gas six to eight weeks' time, correct?
That is correct, right, so they won't build any buildings until these, this issue of this plant has been resolved, for this facility.
Right. So approving the map today, just approves the map, and it would be altered if, in fact, Southern California and the builder and the planning department decided that it needed to be altered in any way, correct?
Right, so either they would, Supervisor Long, they would either fulfill one of the two mitigation measures, ensure that the valves are there, and the appropriate safety shut-off valves are there, or they would move the facility. If one of those did not come to fruition, they could come back in and amend the project and come up with a different alternative.
Okay, and my concern is if we don't put this ministerial map together, we are not going to get to that point of the six to eight weeks where there's a decision, because we've had two thousand eight, two thousand and twelve, and just finally now, we're getting some movement, and it's because we've had to apply certain pressures, which I don't like, but that's why I'm concerned if we let this approval of the map go on for weeks or months, that this project is going to be completely delayed, and for the benefit of those that are going to actually move into these homes, which will be built safely, I'm just hopeful that today everyone does see that, it is useful to approve this ministerial map today, and we know that we still have six to eight weeks for Southern California Gas, the developer and planning, to come up with one of the alternatives and to move forward with that.
So this would be subject to-
Because that makes sense.
Subject to, it would be to all those conditions, the ministerial map.
Correct, right, they would not, you would record the map, but then they would still have their new set of conditions prior to issuing, prior to residential construction, there's a whole nother set of conditions they would need to meet, this will be one of them.
Okay.
Could I just ask the Southern California Gas representative to come forward one more time and give me an example of what you see could happen in the interim?
Thank you Supervisor Parks. What I could comment on that is, the concern is if the trap map is approved, it would be a harder remedy if we do come back and say, well, perhaps we need a larger buffer area, or some of the mitigation measures, once our subject matter experts have the opportunity to really examine, and again, this was a third-party report, so SoCal Gas can't speak to, the validity of a report done by a consultant, but we would like to have that opportunity to have our subject matter experts really look at this and say, is there a better option, configuration, mitigation measures? And again, the reason we're asking for this, it would be very easy to say, sure, go ahead, not a problem, but at the end of the day, we're looking long-term, how is this going to impact the residents? And again, we want this to be a very successful development, we are not trying to delay the development or oppose it, but in good conscience, if there's, if we need a little bit more time to really explore this, why not allow that time?
But Maria would-
And the impact to residents that a shut-off valve won't correct?
And again, that's more of my subject matter experts should be able to answer, but yes, we would like a little bit more time to explore that.
But Maria, Kim mentioned too, you know-
Can I make an inter-
Go ahead Supervisor. Supervisor Long, go ahead.
I have an email here, saying that SCG has a standard design for these stations to monitor and control the gas volumes, quality and odorization. These controls provide automatic shutdown and have been utilized since day one on the operation. They're just stating that they, I'm not sure how many people they have to get in the same room to say the same thing to receive a letter, but if we are able to move forward with this, I'm sure this letter could be done in the six to eight weeks, I'm hoping. Is that, can you formulate that in the six to eight weeks, Maria?
I'm sorry, I wasn't a hundred percent clear.
Can you-
Sorry.
No, it's the connection.
Do you think in the-
It is a connection, I apologize, and what I'm trying to say is six to eight weeks is enough time to get this letter together, correct?
So what I-
Six to eight weeks, yeah.
What I can commit to, and I've expressed this, is as the government affairs public relations manager of the area, I'm fully engaged and working internally to bring the partners that need to be involved. I've already engaged leadership and under individuals, so I do find it regrettable in the past. Like I said, there was missteps probably on both sides, I could take that, and honestly, that some representatives didn't have the authority at SoCal Gas to make some of these decisions, but now we have the people who need to be engaged. But I didn't a hundred percent hear everything Supervisor Long said, but I do want to kind of add one comment. So if we look at the development, at the location Piru now, we have a couple of homes that are across the street, but what has raised some concerns for us is now we're looking at adding ninety-one homes, and let's just be conservative, say three people per home, some homes will have more, we're looking at close to three hundred people that are going to be adjacent to that facility. That adds, that definitely does require different mitigation measures, if not moving the facility, so I believe we're in time to still look at these issues. So that's why I came here today to bring that to everybody's attention, that we do want to do what's in the bestest interest of the future residents.
But Maria-
Okay. Could I ask Tim Cohen to come up to the stand?
Kim? Tim, okay.
Yes.
Well, he's coming up, I just want to ask a quick question. If we approve this, it'd be subject to all those conditions that Kim asked, is that correct? Kim, you know, and then-
Yes.
Because we're not, we can, if there's any safety issues or any safety concerns, then they have sufficient time to take care of those things, is that correct?
That would be correct, Chair Zerigoza, this is, this is not the final step on this map by a long shot.
All right, okay.
Good afternoon, or good morning, actually, Tim Cohen with Tataviam, which is the builder of these beautiful homes in Piru. This is our permit, thousand and thirty-six pages, took three years, over half a million dollars. Southern California Gas was engaged, this is the permit you approved in December two thousand eight. This is the agreement that we obtained financing, we obtained investors, and gave us the ability and confidence to build homes in Ventura County. You know, Southern California Gas has been involved the whole way. The study that was performed in two thousand five by Reese Chambers Consultants was with Southern California Gas. I'm just going to kind of go really quickly through what I just sent you, and Supervisor Long has a copy of this, once I found out she wasn't going to be here, I was able to send it to her. But you'll see in December two thousand fifteen, we confirmed regarding the right-of-way, the letter that Southern California Gas sent you, said that our project is determined upon taking their property, that's just not true. We've designed two sidewalks, one that goes with their property, and one that goes around their property. The County of Ventura Public Works has approved both sections, whichever way the county would like to go, the sidewalk and the Main Street will be improved in Piru, which it needs to be, there are no sidewalks in Piru in this area. I would call your attention to page three of the attachments. Mr. Kaufman is the Account Manager of Energy Markets. He is also considered a subject matter expert by Southern California Gas. Southern California Gas has a standard design for these stations to monitor and control gas volume, quality and odorization. These controls provide automatic shutdown and have been utilized since day one of the operation. On June twenty-ninth, Planning Department was very proactive in trying to help us get an answer from Southern California Gas to answer this specific condition. In that meeting with Kim Pearlheart, Jennifer Welch, Sarah McGurk of the Planning Department, was Thomas Kaufman, again, Account Manager, Energy Markets, Mark Amendola, the District Operations Manager, Luis Rojas, the Project Manager, Gas Transmission Measurement and Instrumentation and Control. In that meeting, Mr. Amendola confirmed that there is a leak detection and automatic shutdown system in the facility that meets the condition that is in our contract, our agreement, our EIR. So we feel we've satisfied the condition. This condition is subject to compliance prior to building, not to map recordation. We don't record, we've already started grading, we've already put in storm drain, we've already put in the sewer, we've put in the water lines, we have local contractors who've been working for the last hundred and twenty days. If this does not record, the whole project stops for the next six to eight weeks. So we relied upon our agreement, we've done what we were supposed to do. I cannot compel Southern California Gas to write a letter, I wish I could, but they were nice enough to attend a meeting with the Planning Department, and they affirmed in that meeting exactly our condition was in place, they affirmed in a memo the day, the email, the day before. We've invested in the community, we have over four hundred and eleven people on an interest list waiting for these homes, over ninety percent are from Ventura County. These are the only homes that I know in Ventura County, they're going to be between the range of four hundred to five hundred, but these delays do nothing but increase the price to our constituents, to our neighbors. This is a project that's been in the works for, since two thousand and five, twelve years. We've done our part, we've done what we're supposed to do, I cannot help Southern California coming late to the game, it's not allowed, that's why we have this EIR. It is a safe project, it's a safe community, I'm there every day.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Any questions, any questions to Tim? Supervisor Long?
Yes, does anyone have any other questions?
Supervisor Bennett?
I don't have a question, I have a statement, and, Mr. Cohen, you can stay up, I guess, just so you can more directly hear the comment. Regarding this issue, and regarding the recording of the map, I am comfortable with going forward. I think that the point you make, it says I try to weigh on balance Southern California, Edison, I mean, the gas companies' request for delay versus the impacts of the request of delay, I think it's, in my mind, it's clear that there are enough protections out there for the public, and that there will be more action they'll have to take. I do want to just philosophically get this set out there, and that is that I hope more housing gets built eventually in that area, but I think we all recognize that we have another item on our agenda today, dealing with a loan from the county to help pay for the sewer system upgrade that is out there. And there will be pretty steady requests for people to somehow have the taxpayers of all of Ventura County subsidize those sewer rates, and providing sewer service in that area is a very, is a big challenge, and we all know that with all the federal requirements, et cetera. And I just want to be clear that I think the policy of the board should be, that's the one, that's the one place where we draw the line, that ratepayers have to pay for their sewer each, et cetera. I'm not suggesting that that's not happening here, I just want to get that said so that as you and others are coming forward, that request for some kind of subsidy on that, or to avoid those rate, those fee increases, because we're in a very precarious spot here in that we lend the money, but it's a Prop. 218 vote, people could turn around and vote to not have the rates, their rates go up, and we could be, you know, really in a very ticklish spot, what are we going to, shut off the sewer service? So just want to get that set about the project, but I do welcome good projects going forward that are affordable for people in that area.
We did pay our connection fees. We did pay our connection fees already.
Supervisor Parks.
This isn't, to me, whether we have the development or don't have the development, it's a matter of making sure that the new residents of the development aren't forced to hear, smell noxious odors. And when you have the gas company come before you and testify that the person was not authorized to approve or support this project from the gas company, that gives me some concern, and that now that she is engaged, they have the experts that should be on it, on it, and I think who knows better than the gas company as to the potential impact of this facility on the residents? This to me is not whether we build, but how we build. And we all sit on the Air Pollution Control District, we had a case where just one resident was impacted by the smell from a well, to such an extent that a lot of actions had to be taken, and it was not easy at that point. I realize this is going to get approved, the track map, from the discussion at the board, but I really think we need to use the only leverage that we have right now, which is the track map approval, to ensure that we have adequate mitigation, which I don't believe is in place from the testimony of the gas company, so I'll vote against it.
So Kim, Kim, the, again, I go back to, this is all subject to, the permits will not be issued until all those concerns and conditions are satisfied, is that, is that correct? I mean, this is generalizing the, what I'm sharing, so can you give us more specifics on that?
So, yes, so Chair Zerigoza, as I said, they do have other conditions that need to be satisfied, this will have to be worked out with the gas company before they can build, so it's not the last issue. The issue of the study that was done for odor mitigation was very clear that it didn't rise to the level of mitigation because it was less insignificant, however, it is put, along with a host of other things, on the disclosure documents that will be disclosed in the, in the sale of the homes, that there is a facility, there is a potential for odor.
Okay. Supervisor-
Go ahead Supervisor.
Lee Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, I just, I feel like I should speak before the vote, I don't want to try to anticipate the vote. Just that, I think to make the board understand clearly what it means when people say this is a ministerial action, which is, the board has to approve this if all the pre-recordation criteria have been met. The board can disapprove it if it finds, but it has to have evidence, finds that not all of the pre-recordation criteria have been met. You can't just deny it because you want to. Now, also, there's an issue of timing, so you can't just continue it indefinitely. With the final map, if it's filed, the applicant's entitled to a timely decision on it, and it could be this meeting, at most, the next regular meeting, under the statutes. So there's a timeliness issue, so you know, I, so just keep that in mind, those are the basic criteria. criteria. And I can fill in if you have any more questions, but understand, those are, those are the compulsion that, that the board is under.
That we must, okay.
Is there a requirement to have the consent of the gas company in any of this?
No consent. Okay. Supervisor Long?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. And the motion is to approve. There's a second?
Could I amend the motion that we bring it and have the approval at our next meeting instead to give time for discussion on how this could be improved?
Supervisor?
Supervisor Long?
I prefer not to.
Okay, so the initial, and then motion stands?
And I'll assume that my motion to continue this for decision at our next meeting does not have a second.
That, right. So, okay, let's go ahead and vote with the initial.
Steve, I just, while we're voting, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the comment about the sewer system and stuff because I think that's important. I said in that meeting about the $2 million and
I agree.
that's coming up. And what there is positive about that is, Lee Royne's there and Mike, is about one point, one, one and three-quarters million of its payoff other debt, so which is great. We're not doing more debt, but there is, part of this whole situation is we've got to get more housing into that system to pay for that. And going back to your other side, this is our opportunity to provide some housing that we need so desperately in this county. So I appreciate that part, but I agree with you. We don't, even though we provide housing, we want to do whatever we can. We don't want to be subsidizing any of that in the future, so.
And that gives us an additional 200-plus homes.
Yeah, and I think there's another 150 homes hopefully built. That'll pay for our, our money, get our money back and, you know,
A total of 200-plus homes.
which is great, but it'll also provide those housing. It's a great article in the paper in regards to California, their housing shortage, exporting, and now I looked, saw Utah. Utah's dying with the Californians, kind of, we can't build houses fast enough to keep up with, you know, that whole issue. So we've got to do whatever we can to keep our people here, build housing. So, and these are great pricing, these prices of houses.
Okay, please vote.
And I would just say that a condition that is a disclosure statement that you have to sign agreeing that you know that you live next to something with a noxious odor isn't the best result. If you can get rid of the noxious odor so you don't have that, that is the best result.
Okay. So please vote.
Long, both yes?
Yes. Okay, and that's approved, four to one. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Okay, our next item is public comments, and I have quite a few.
Mr.?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the board's forbearance. We have our district attorney here, and he is here for an adjourn in memory of somebody from his staff, and I think if, particularly since we have so many public comments, and he's been patient for the last hour here, I would like to go just to one of my comments, which is an adjourn in memory, and then I'll go, I'll hold the rest of my comments. But
Mr. Dean?
Barbara Dixon passed away and District Attorney.
We had you on the next item, but we're gonna move you up to.
Thank you. And I want to especially thank Supervisor Bennett for asking your board to adjourn in memory of Barbara Dixon, who devoted 20 years of her professional life to serving in the District Attorney's Office and is, in every sense, a beloved member of the county family. Barbara, for those of you that had the benefit of meeting her and working with her, she had just an amazing smile, a spirit of kindness and generosity that affected people across all walks of life, whether serving at-risk youth in our community, opening her home to people in need of housing, consoling a coworker over a loss, or simply competing on the golf course. In everything Barbara did, in every contact, in every human contact she had, she brought this heavenly grace with her that touched people profoundly. When you, when you encountered Barbara, your day, no matter how difficult it was, no matter how challenging it was, suddenly became brighter and it became, became more joyful. Some of her colleagues recently had the unenviable task of packing up her belongings from her office, and during that process, they found a significant number of really telling reminders of just how special this remarkable woman was. It included things like pictures of a smiling Barbara with coworkers, with friends, with family, many, many thank you notes, not just from her colleagues, but also from family members of those colleagues, Bible verses of encouragement that she had arrayed in her office. And she also, for, for appropriate measure, had a few gold medals from corporate games that she was quite proud of. She was a fierce competitor. But among these mementos was a tiny slip of paper that was a fortune that one would find in a fortune cookie. And this, this simple note revealed much about Barbara and our Barbara, as we like to call her. And it said very simply, "Be prepared to lend a helping hand to a coworker tomorrow." You know, for those of us that worked with her, Barbara really lived that age-old maxim of to have a friend, you have to be a friend. And she had many friends, a number of whom are, are with me today. She was selfless, unfailingly positive, and happy, most of all, happy in service to others. So that memory of, of Barbara that we celebrate and we acknowledge today is a joyful one, one that brings a, a smile to our face and a spirit of gratitude for the time we enjoyed with her. So I want to thank your board. I want to thank Supervisor Bennett for this adjournment in memory of just a wonderful public service, public servant and human being. I'd also like to announce that we will be celebrating her life on September 9th at 2:00 PM at Sarah Cross in Grant Park. That's a Saturday, and Sarah Cross was one of her favorite spots in the county. So I thank you.
Mr. Dean, condolences to the family.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to, to come here and so appropriately honor her. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Okay, our next item is public comments, and I have quite a few comments here, cards. So we're gonna go, what, two minutes per, per person here, and first person is Rachel Huff, followed by John Reed. Rachel, welcome.
Good morning, Supervisors.
You have John Reed with you too, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is my boss, Chief John Reed at Cal State Channel Islands Police Department. I am here at the request of Supervisor Zaragoza, and I am here actually to provide an invitation to all the supervisors, including the ones that are not here, especially them.
She's listening to you.
Yeah, but they're listening, exactly. We are doing an amazing project at Cal State Channel Islands that actually Supervisor Parks started us with, where she put together, helped us put together a grit team, a graffiti removal intervention team, which provided supplies from the County Public Works Department to our campus to paint over graffiti, graffiti abatement, which I learned is actually painting over it, but that's okay. And so what we've done is, because of the help of Supervisor Zaragoza and Supervisor Parks's office, we, on August 26th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, 9:00 AM to 12:00, everyone write that down.
Mark it down.
We are bringing together, and we have 150 Channel Island students volunteering their time. Supervisor Zaragoza obtained for us buses through Gold Coast Transit.
That's right.
The Oxnard Police Department is providing, their Peace Officers Association gave us $200 to provide snacks and Gatorade for our students. They also are working to find the locations of where all the graffiti is located. They're going to be painting two miles long in the channel, water channel of graffiti. Oxnard is gonna look amazing. At the end of the project, our students will come back to campus where we will provide lunch to those that participated, and then we have nonprofits from Oxnard coming to our campus to talk to the students about how they can participate and make a difference in Oxnard throughout their year at Cal State Channel Islands this year. So I would offer the opportunity to other supervisors to come with us and learn how to paint. Supervisor Parks already knows, so she, I'm sure, would be willing to come and give you some tips.
She's gonna do some painting, too.
She's gonna do some painting. She's very good at it. And, and then you could learn how to paint and then perhaps take that to your district and create an amazing partnership that we have. Chief?
John?
Yeah. Thank you very much, Supervisors. It's been a great program for our students and our campus. As you know, the campus works very hard integrating with, with the larger community, and to put out 150 students who are willing to step out into Ventura County and serve is just an important part of our mission, so thank you for your support.
And I want to also say, you know, that Lourdes Solerzano from my office is here. She's gonna be participating too, and she's already has her, her paintbrush and her rollers ready and ready to go. And also, I want to thank Marvin Booze. I'm not sure if Marvin's listening to us, but Marvin's really helped us tremendously throughout the city of Oxnard, the county for that matter, but I just want to commend also the Channel Islands University. I think this orientation for the new students, is that correct?
It's Welcome Week, so all our students are moving in that weekend, and every Saturday of Welcome Week, we do a service project. And so I, I called John Bruslinger, who's from the Oxnard Police Department. He runs their graffiti and gang unit, and I said, "I need some help, John. I need graffiti." He's like, "I can help you."
Thank you. And also, I understand they're gonna have breakfast and lunch.
Mm-hmm. Breakfast and lunch.
And also, I want to thank Gold Coast, you know, Gold Coast Transit.
That was amazing. The buses are amazing.
They're gonna, they're gonna provide three buses, 45-passenger buses, you know, for the, maybe probably three and a half buses.
Yeah.
That, you know, because of that. And I just want to thank you so much, you know, for the good work that you are going to do and to help the students and to help the graffiti program, and John Reed and Lourdes from my staff, Oxnard PD, and, and again, Marvin Booze, and the County of Ventura. You know, we're in, we have a lot of partnerships in the County of Ventura, and we want to thank you tremendously for that.
Thank you so much.
For that project.
I think this is our biggest collaboration so far, and so if any of you want to come, you're welcome to call me or call Supervisor Zaragoza's office.
My office, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Supervisor Parks, hold on, I think.
No, just great collaboration, and the end result is we're gonna have cleaner neighborhoods, and we want to get rid of that graffiti right away because otherwise it attracts more graffiti, right?
Well, when Supervisor Parks gave us the paint and the brushes the first time that we painted on the bridges that were off-campus but in the waterways, it's never returned.
That's.
So people tell you, "Oh, you're creating a fresh palette." It never came back. So you're right.
Excellent. Good news.
No, I, I think doing the right thing, this is great. We've done this, the Boy Scouts and more parks mostly. You guys are doing the right thing. If we can get the, the, these kids at the university to say, "Look, you know, this is our place. Let's just go out and do it with the window of your leadership." This is great.
Right.
I appreciate what you're doing.
And the opportunity for nonprofits to come afterwards
That's right.
and talk to the students. Students need service hours. They need projects.
Sure.
I'm sure you guys are looking for interns in your offices. I have free labor. It's a win-win.
And that's really helped, you know. I also want to, I also want to thank probation. Probation's really helped us in the past, you know.
Oh, great.
Over in South Bank and over in South Carolina Avenue and, and
And of course, Public Works is providing
Public Works.
in the restrooms.
Absolutely.
which they'll need, and of course, all the supplies.
Thank you for mentioning Public Works because the yard, over in the yard, we have a gentleman that's always willing to give us a, a paint and so forth, so I want to thank Jeff's Public Works Department too for that.
Yeah, so helpful.
Thank you so much, you know, for coming in.
Thank you.
We'll be there. Well, let me, I'm gonna be out of town, but Lourdes is gonna be there, so she's.
That's okay. We'll invite you to the next one.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker says Carlos Rivera, followed by Cotton Davis.
Buenos dias, señores supervisores. Mi nombre es Carlos Rivera. Mi esposa Alejandra Valdez. Estamos aquí para, pues, apoyar a todo el grupo más que nada. Apoyarnos entre todos en el plan de salud, en el plan de salarios. Yo tengo ya cuatro años con mi esposa. Ella tuvo un embolio, perdió la mitad de, de la capacidad de, de su cuerpo. He estaba trabajando muy fuerte con ella. Yo tenía muy buen trabajo. Lo tuve que dejar porque amo.
Pardon, señor. I just want to.
Yes, of course. Good morning, Supervisors. I'm here today at this morning. I just want to let you know that my wife, a medical provider for my wife, she had a stroke about four years ago, and I had a good job at the time, but I'm now taking care of her.
Yeah, I worked for, like, for four, four years. I worked for 24 hours, 24 hours. So some problems in the midnight. We were at the hospital anytime. It's un trabajo, this is a hard job. So I love my wife. The point is, we want more salary for, I have a lot of expenses I can cover. I have my basic expenses, like pay the rent, pay my, my bills, electricity, gas. I pay higher rent. So before, when I have my regular job, I can spend money for, for good clothes, blue shoes, many things. Now, now I can't. I can't. So when my wife need orthopedic shoes, I can buy those ones. Or the special food for her, she's healthy, she need a diet, so I can cover. It's expensive to follow the rules. So it's hard for me, hard, very hard, and sometimes it's sad. So I love my wife. So this is the important point for me, the salary is, before it's, I'm the truck driver. So my salary is different, very different, but I got everything. I don't care. I love my wife. But supervisors, if you stay in, in, anyone in our shoes, one day, one night, it's very hard, 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 hard. At the year, my wife is like four, five times in San Jones Hospital. So it's very sad. So she live with the pain. She has to, the clip and other thing on, on the head. So she feel live forever with the pain. So it's frustrating for me. Other point is, we need the, the good cover, the medical, the good medical cover. I listen, my, my partners need many things for, for, for medical. So please think and those two, if, if the bridge is broke right now, if the bridge come down, you tell the governor, "Okay, fix. This is the, the, the special, special work to do. We need no more people dead." So now we stay in that point. The people almost dead. Those guys need a plan. They have a plan, please. Help us. Darling, I appreciate it for you, for you listen to, to us and all my heart is for my wife and you guys. Please help us. Don't leave alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Cotton Davis, followed by Maria Alvarez. Cotton Davis.
Supervisors, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this morning. I want to pay tribute to one of your colleagues, Supervisor Long, who came to one of our monthly meetings in Santa Paula last week, and she had, got a real taste of what we're about and some of the tensions and pressures in our financial situation, and we're really grateful for her having done that. And we encourage you, any one of you or all of you, to come to our meetings also. There's another one in Oxnard each month. Basically, today, I just wanted to explain to you a little bit about my personal situation. I have, I, I have a care recipient who has neurological diseases, five of them, and is in constant pain, and I care for her 24/7. I live in an office in the apartment, and basically, I'm with her all the time, and I, I, I wanted to convey to you that my personal find- And I, I wanted to convey to you that my personal financial situation is rocky, and it's annoying. I've been offered a number of jobs, and I can't take them because I cannot leave Karen. I've been with her for 10 years. And basically, we're in a situation where I have a grandchild and a son. One of my two sons is having real problems with finding work. And with my granddaughter, she's trying to get into school, and the costs are enormous. I'm trying to convey to you that my out-of-pocket expenses are not for my own needs.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, for sharing.
And I wanted to get on with, just, just, you know, I realize that you folks are going off on vacation for five weeks. And I want to challenge you to think purple during these five weeks.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Just please, please realize that your responsibility is, goes beyond just giving thanks to what we do.
We take things.
We know we have an important job in this, in this county.
We take it very seriously.
But take some action.
Thank you.
In northern part of the state, the wages for in-home caregivers are $14 an hour. We're at $1,250.
We have Maria's, Maria's right behind you. She wants to share with us, too. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you for sharing.
You get my drift.
Absolutely.
Think purple.
Absolutely. Thank you. Maria Alvarez, followed by Arthur Munoz.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Maria Alvarez, and I'm here to tell you a little bit of my situation. I have a son that he's bed bound. I wish I could bring him with me, but I can't because he's on bed. He is a big boy. He's 43-years-old. He got an issue. He was eating, and he choked. So he's got a lack of oxygen. And he is in a feeding tube. So I'm doing like a nurse job, because he's connected to a feeding machine, so I have to be cleaning his butt. I have to be cleaning the pump. I have to be flushing, giving water to the, I'm sorry, to the stomach. So it's very hard. And I do this because I want to, because I love my son. I can be working in some other place, somewhere else, but I think nobody's gonna take care of my son like me. But sometimes, like medical only pays $160 a month for Depends, diapers, pads, bed liners, and that is not enough for him. So I have to pay some, buy some more stuff for him. Sometimes I have to do it with my money. And I just wanted to ask you guys to help us out. We need it. And I wish I can, was, whereas here, talking to you, asking for you, but I am. My son cannot be here, but I'm here. Thank you. And I know you guys understand.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah. Okay, we have Arthur Munoz, followed by Bert Pirello.
Hello, my name is Arthur Fred Munoz. And like I previously stated, in 1990, I was invidiously persecuted by a judge of the name of Lawrence Dorch, case number CR-25901. What I find kind of hypocritical is in saying, in saying the pleasantries and the freedom of law kind of didn't apply to me in life, and it hasn't applied to me based on this invidious persecution, egregious racial prejudice and discrimination that has, that was inflicted upon me in this case in 1990. You know, I know you people are the overseers of the Superior Court, and that's what compels me to be here today, or whenever I'm here. In 1990, I was invidiously persecuted. I was accused of raping a 16-year-old girl when I was 25-years-old. This 16-year-old girl by the name of Tina Baird had accused eight people of rape in the same calendar year, including her biological father and grandfather. And I was the only person ever charged in a court of law. Now, ultimately, what happened in the suppression of evidence is beyond scandalous. At that point, this woman was using, this young lady was using the court system, the victim-witness crime fund, as a personal ATM. She was trying to get like $3,000 from me at the time, based on an allegation that she had to go into some hospital, based on an allegation against me. However, that was overturned because it was found to be a lie, and it was based on her previous allegation against some other person. And what I want to say is, I've had adversities where I try to put my stuff on the internet, and I had my internet access blocked in Ventura County and prevented from me disclosing this stuff or conveying this stuff onto the internet.
Mr. Munoz, thank you for sharing. Bert Pirello, followed by Monica Gray.
Oh, okay. Councilmember.
If there are other SEIU members that are willing to speak, I'll not break their continuity. I don't know if there are.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, members of the Board of Supervisors, and CEO Mike Powers. My name is Bert Pirello. I'm a member of the Oxnard City Council. And hearing the discussions and the comments that are made today, it is, John, I'm sure you can see it's much different than what the City Council, although we have some barnburner nights. I'm here as a member of the Oxnard City Council here today to acknowledge and thank the County of Ventura for recent intergovernmental cooperation efforts, the Animal Regulation Department, County Treasurer and Tax Collector Steve Hints, and the Ventura County Public Works Agency, Watershed Protection Division. All three of these governmental departments worked together collaborative and effectively with the city of Oxnard regarding public service matters and importance in our respective county and city. I had an opportunity last week to speak with Mr. Mike Powers, wanted to thank him and told him that I would come here, basically on this point. And I will touch on the three since I have the opportunity, and I know you've cut the time down. The Animal Control came to the city of Ventura and had a presentation and a discussion with respect to the charges, and they were very forthwith and stood up for the county with respect to how charges are going back and forth between the county and the city. And unfortunately, following day, I have a longtime friend, over 40-years, he had a dog named Samantha, 17-years-old, and the dog had to be put down. He was taking the dog to the Ventura County Animal Control, and he has, he was going by himself, and I know him, and he treats his animal as a member of the family. I volunteered to go. It was a very eye-opening experience. The staff treated him with the utmost respect. They were extremely professional. The kindness, compassion, all the, the whole of the words. I didn't get their names, but I want to thank you. One thing I learned as an Oxnard Council member, they do check that we don't get, as the city of Oxnard, nailed for fees that are not adjudicated to us because of our zip code and the boundaries of the city of Oxnard. One other thing I found out, the city of Oxnard residents can get the euthanasia for free if they have a license. That is unknown. I would also like to thank, and so thank you. I hope you pass it on. You got a good group of people there.
Absolutely. Will do.
I would also like to thank Treasurer Judge Hints for taking the time to speak with me again this past, this past week. And I did carry it forward to my city. There were some very serious questions coming up about software. I thank the individual for having spoken with us at the beginning of the year with the county elect, with the city-elected treasurer. And thank you. I'd also like to take the time to thank the Ventura County Public Works, Watershed Protection specifically. I had a speech, but I, Watershed Protection was able to finish a job that the city of Oxnard had a contract with the Dallas Cowboys.
They are working with the Cowboys now, right? They have parking.
And they had to have a place for parking.
Yeah.
My personal views, we'll not get into this, but I had a slight difference view about what had the highest priority, football or the residents. The county finished the job three days early, three days early. The city was able to accommodate everything, move forward. I want to also say that on June 6th, I was personally in attendance when the county representatives, and I'll name them, Mr. Gerard Capuzic, Angela Bonafita, Alan Peter Sheahe, and Musud Jahal. I believe I'm heard his last name. At a critical onsite meeting with construction contractors and federal and state environmental health with respect to endangered species. Everything was able to be worked out. You have a terrific staff, a terrific staff you should be proud of. You have an individual who I've become a friend with, Mr. Gerard Capuzic. This individual comes to neighborhood councils, comes to city presentations, explains what's going on. Oftentimes, the residents don't like the information, but he gives them the straight scoop. We have issues now with FEMA and the ocean, as you do, and issues are coming up. I think that if you could clone this guy, you would be doing your good services. If we could clone him and have somebody like that working for our city, we would be doing very well. And I'm not saying that as a friend. I'm saying that as a fact. An elected official for 207,000 people in that city, when he comes and gives them the answer, nobody walks away that they got snowballed or basically deceived. Thank you very much. Again, Animal Control, Treasurer's Office, and Public Works. Thank you very much.
And I really appreciate that.
And I appreciate what you go through, and I appreciate the concerns of the residents.
And we thank you for the partnership between Oxnard and the County of Ventura.
Yeah, and Bert, also, thanks for coming. Not a lot of people always come and tell you the good things, so.
That's exactly right. And I'm sure that our agency directors and Mr. Powers heard that, because we need that too, as well as in the city of Oxnard, when you're doing good. When you're doing bad, you hear about it, but when you're doing good, we don't. But thank you so much for sharing.
Councilmen, they really are the unsung heroes. So thank you for taking the time to come here. Some of them are here. Johnson Gill is here from Health Care Agency, but also I know the teams are listening and watching the meeting right now. So thank you. It means a lot to them.
Brian?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Long has left the meeting.
Supervisor Long, just for the record, Supervisor Long has left the meeting from DC. Okay, Monica.
Somebody beamed her up.
Monica Gray, followed by Amparo.
Yes, right.
Monica?
Good morning, board supervisors.
You're on.
Chair Zaragoza, nice to see you all again. I had to borrow a line from this guy over here and kind of tweak it to fit my own agenda. You can't just keep blocking safe access just because you want to. I'm talking about safe access to medical cannabis. I know that in certain cities among the county, there has been a little bit of movement towards positive progress and respecting the will of the people, respecting the will of the voters. You know that whole thing about life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness? My pursuit of happiness includes joining the cannabis industry, maybe in some other capacity, because believed or not, I might not be moving along with SESP for the next journey. And that is because in any arena that I'm in, I will fight for patients, I will fight for fairness, and I will fight for the protection of others. So, you know, I don't know all the specifics of why they tore our collective up, but I will say that I was a little irritated that through the action of civil asset forfeiture, we had a lot of employees that weren't able to be paid their final paychecks. But now that's being made right, too. I want to ask public health and your board, who is going to be protecting patients? Who's going to be doing the weights and measurements, making sure people aren't getting shorted on whatever they're purchasing or donating it for? I volunteer. You guys want to create a position that allows me to, you know, keep people acting right and keep people protecting patients? I'm all for it. I got two of my daughters sitting back there. My son's not present today, but I want them to understand that just because you get knocked down, you still get to get back up and you get to fight harder. So I'm asking you, I know that you can't take an action during today's meeting, but I want you to form some semblance for the community of who's going to be protecting patients going forward. Because no matter what facility they visit, no matter who they get their medicine from, it better be lab-tested, and patients need to be treated kindly.
Thank you, Monica.
The people that are here that are in-home support service providers.
We support them.
I feel for them, because when my son, when my son was a baby, I had to deal with a lot of that same stuff. And I couldn't really trust any of the community service organizations to provide him with care that was, you know, to the standard that I would have liked. They wanted to pay people like a little bit of money to go out there.
Monica, we support them, too. Thank you so much for sharing.
I appreciate you guys. And actually, I want to say something. At this meeting, you actually looked at me when I spoke. In other meetings, when I've been before you, maybe because I don't come here in a suit or with a badge or any authority, I've felt in the past that when I've addressed this board, I just get kind of dismissed as some crazy broad that comes to every meeting.
We appreciate your comments. We really do. And thank you for sharing. You do it every time, and we do listen to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. We have Amparo Rothwex, followed by, I think this last one. Amparo? Okay. Buenos dias.
Estoy aquí presente para decirles mis necesidades.
I am here, I am here present today to tell you my needs here. You are?
Porque aquí tengo a mi esposo en silla de ruedas.
My husband is in a wheelchair.
Por 18 años.
For the last 18 years.
Y las necesidades son de las 24 horas al día.
And the needs are, the needs are 24/7.
Y este, yo lo atiendo de todo a todo.
I take care of him 100%.
Yo lo hago de enfermera, yo lo hago de todas las necesidades de él. Soy la que las estoy resolviendo.
See, I'm doing the nurse job, and I taking care of every single need. Everything that he needs, I take care of that.
Este, y nosotros nos vemos en una situación media difícil.
Oh, we're, right now, we're going through a very difficult situation.
Porque es que el dinero no nos alcanza.
The money that we earn, is that enough?
Es que nosotros, usted como sabemos todo mundo que la, todo lo que se necesita en un hogar está demasiado caro.
Everything that we need at home, everything is so expensive now.
Y este, yo vengo, y yo quiero seguir cuidando a mi esposo mientras que Dios me dé vida.
I will, I'm here, I will let you take care of my husband as long as I live.
Y para, y para, para seguir viviendo en esta, es muy difícil la situación que tengo.
In order for me to do that, for me, it's very hard. My situation is very difficult.
Así es que yo aquí les, les vengo a decir mi situación y espero que nos comprendan un poquito.
So I'm here to tell you my situation, and I hope you understand just a little bit.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias, Amparo. Gracias. Thank you so much. Okay, that's our end of our public comments, so we're gonna go right into board comments. Supervisor Parks?
I'll have to wait until I've been asked on the end.
Okay, Supervisor Bennett?
Yes, I'd like to, I have three things I'd like to do. One, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Marine Ryan Cox. He was one of the heroes that was tragically killed in that crash of the KC-130 transport plane over rural Mississippi. And, you know, the more we learn about him, the more remarkable I find. What an incredible man. But he joined the Marine Corps in July of 2007 and just won honor after honor. He received numerous decorations, among them Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal with a Gold Star Combat Action Ribbon and Selective Service Ribbon. And he was really a calm, very intelligent, friendly guy, one of those silent professionals that should, reminds me of the line that sometimes a country gets an army that is better than they deserve, and it's guys like him that really create that. Also, promised that I would announce that there's gonna be a foster care summit in, on Saturday, August 12th, from 8:30 to 12:30. And it's designed to encourage and equip individuals that have a heart for foster care and adoption. And it's gonna be at 1954 Goodyear Avenue. So if you have anybody that you've been trying to encourage to become a foster parent, there's gonna be a real motivational guest speaker there, could be really helpful. As I said last time, when the SEIU workers were here, I want to say again that there's a real challenge with the situation with regards to your pay. And that challenge is that most of the money from your, for your pay comes from the federal government and comes from the state government. And so the county is very limited in terms of what flexibility it has. And it's unfortunate that we have a situation where we have this sort of divided responsibility. They don't get lobbied, they don't hear your stories about why you need pay increases. We do, and yet they're the ones that control the vast majority. majority of the purse strings with regards to that. So I find that unfortunate, and I wanted to get that said. Finally, I would like to make a quick presentation here, a PowerPoint presentation, about something that's pretty important to me that happened in this past week. And I want to be real clear to this board, and I appreciate that. I know we have another item. I'll try to be brief. But in this boardroom, I have publicly defended our RMA department head from inappropriate attacks. I know specifically one time where I challenged a Seafrog member that came, and I thought it was inappropriate, and I took the political heat and publicly defended them in that situation. There have been other times when I certainly have held my tongue, but in this, here we go. There we go. That's what I was looking for. This past week, July 25th, at the Ojai City Council meeting, an incident happened that I just, is one that I have to call out. And just to give you the background, the Ojai City Council was considering an appeal of Planning Director's decision to grant a 20-year extension of an oil CUP and allow 24 continuous flaring of gas, among other things. Now, admittedly, this is a small project, but certainly the Ojai City Council has the right to decide whether they want to appeal the decision of the Planning Director or not appeal that. Not a large project, but they certainly have the right to appeal. Again, small project, but it did have some things that raised concerns in Ojai, going to continuous flaring, when they used to be, their old permit said they had to take it out by a pipeline. Pipeline's not there. The small cities like this, and so one of the complaints pointed out by our planning staff was that the city had not commented, and in general, with regard to another item, and commented that the city doesn't attend all the regional planning meetings. And I think all of us recognize that these small cities have very limited staff. In some of these cities, one person wears the Planning Director hat and the Public Safety hat and three or four different hats. It's going to be understandable that there will be times when they can't monitor projects that are outside of their city limits, being approved by the city, at the speed or at the time that the county necessarily pulls it up. The City of Ojai has an acting Planning Director person who has multiple responsibilities up there. But, so the City of Ojai did not comment on this as it went through the process, but when it was finally approved and they saw what was approved, they decided to agendize whether to appeal this or not. Our Planning Director, now, on the day that they had this meeting, I want to be clear, our Planning Director called and spoke to the Ojai City Manager that day, and there was an opportunity to clarify any misinformation in the staff's report. Very appropriate. If there was something that was not being accurately portrayed about what the city, I mean, what the county had done, that was very appropriate to be able to communicate that. But at the City Council meeting that night, after our Planning Director spoke to the City Manager, the following exchange took place, and I have this exchange. I want to get out there. Whoop, I've got to go back to the exchanged. Here we go. Here we go. So there's two, there's going to be two exchanges here. One, the City Council is just finishing approving the consent items that are not having any comments being made about them, right?
Sorry, they were.
Consideration. It's up to the council whether or not to pull something from.
We'll be with this in just a second. So they're just finishing, and then.
If I get, is item K2, 1K2, being pulled from the consent calendar?
I have not.
I requested it be pulled from the consent calendar for a public hearing.
Which is K2.
A preliminary inquiry, is that pretty much for the City Council?
It's up to the City Council whether to.
Yeah, yes, but I believe the gentleman's referring to the second part of K, the county planning appeal consideration. It's up to the council whether or not to pull something from the consent calendar, but you must take public comment on everything on the agenda, which is accomplished through the general public comment period. There's your opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Again, I request that the council take a vote on whether to pull this off the agenda and set it for a full public hearing.
Okay. Well, thank you for your request. Comments from the council? We are now in the general public comment for items that are not on the agenda, which include items that are on the consent agenda. There is a gentleman here who wished to address that subject. Would you like to come forward, and I'll let you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I provided a packet of information to each of the council members that was intended for your purview prior to making any kind of a decision. And it involves the material in blue paper, our correspondence that was provided to the City of Ojai last year regarding the Bentley Oil and Gas Project. So we contacted the city three times and never received any response to this information until, of course, the item on your agenda tonight. With that, I'm merely going to say that taking an action without allowing for public testimony is a violation of the Brown Act, and that'll be the end of my testimony for tonight. If a person, a public member of the public, pulls something off the consent calendar, you have no option but to accept public testimony and listen to it, consider it, and then make your decision. But the action that occurred tonight is not allowed, despite the advice you just received from your council. So if you have any questions about the Bentley Oil and Gas Project, apparently you don't have any, since you've already taken an action on it.
No, we haven't taken, we have not taken an action on it.
Well, you approved the consent calendar.
Mr.?
Okay. Then tell me what happened when I asked to have it pulled off for a public hearing.
We had several members of the council give an advance notice of which items that they were removing, and we only approved the other items. So we have taken no action now, yet.
Well, then I'll wait for the public hearing for that item.
Okay. When you say public hearing, you're talking about public comment?
You have an item on your agenda, whether the, and it says on your staff report, that you're going to consider whether or not to file an appeal of the Bentley Oil and Gas Project under review by the county.
Right.
And I am waiting for the public hearing for that item, where you're going to hear public testimony and consider that testimony, before you make a decision to whether to authorize your staff to file an appeal or not. So I would like to wait until that public hearing comes up, and I will be.
Mr. Mayor, I want to clarify this point. Okay. Mr. City Attorney will.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item on the agenda tonight does not require a formal public hearing. That is false. The council is required to receive public comment on every item on the agenda. The opportunity for public comment on items on the consent calendar, including this item, is now. Your opportunity to speak is now. There is no other opportunity to speak on this item, and a public hearing is not required. Thank you.
Well, I see that the time is ticking down. Can I have an extra minute?
You certainly may.
All right. Well, the, as I was pointing out in the information I provided, the County of Ventura, the County Planning Division actively coordinates with cities when a project is within their sphere of influence or area of interest. In this case, the Bentley Oil Project is about 1,000 feet from the city limits of Ojai and within the, at least, the area of interest of the City of Ojai. Thus, we provided information in December of 2015 and again in April of 2016 with a full project description. We also gave notice about the Planning Director Public Hearing recently held. And up till tonight, we've received no commentary from the City of Ojai, other than the consideration of whether to appeal it. It would have been much better if we'd heard information, we were able to change the project or address the issues prior to the holding of the Planning Director Public Hearing. The project does not involve any new wells. It does not involve an expansion of the facility. It doesn't involve any changes in truck routes. It actually involves additional limitations on the timing of trucks, that is, only during non-peak hours, and a limitation on the total number of trucks, which works out at about one truckload per day. And also the full-time use of a flare, which formerly was used only when a pipeline was down. The pipeline is gone. It's not, doesn't exist anymore, and thus the facility needs to operate with a full-time flare. That's the entirety of the project. There's no new wells. There's nine existing wells on the site, and, you know, there's nothing changing. So I'm available for any questions, and if not, I will calmly sit down.
Okay. Are there any questions? One, are you suggesting that regardless of whether the city, in a timely way, participated in the process up till now, that the decision that was made by the Planning Department is not appealable?
Well, the decision made by the Planning Director is appealable, and it's certainly within the discretion of your council to file an appeal.
Right. Okay. Fine.
I just, we just want to make sure you have accurate and complete information before, while you're considering whether to do so.
Absolutely. We thank you for that. Thank you. And thank you for your forbearance, listening to that. But as I have defended the Planning Department many times, I want to point out now that I don't think this was proper representation of Ventura County Government. I don't think it was appropriate to send this county representative there to discourage the appeal. I think it's perfectly appropriate to be there to provide information, but to try to discourage the appeal is not appropriate, wasn't appropriate, to send this representative there. I'd also offer to ask this board, how would they feel if a city staff person came and lectured to us about how we should handle our consent calendar, and then said that our county council was wrong when our county council told us how to handle the consent calendar? So I reluctantly bring this to the board, but I bring it to the board because I think it is important for us to recognize that regarding Ojai Valley issues, the confidence and the objectivity of the Planning Division has been undermined, and I think this was an unfortunate incident. So thank you very much. We're going to be dark for five weeks, and this would then become a cold item. So I wanted to make sure that this was something that the board heard from me about my extreme concern about this and how we would, oh, by the way, if this happened in your district to a city council that you have in your district, and you were not informed that this was going to happen, I think you would also think that that was inappropriate, that Supervisor ought to be informed for something like that's happening. But the relations between various elected bodies is one that we should treasure and cherish. And thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I'm sure that RMA heard that, and also our CEO. Supervisor Foye?
Yeah. I'll just adjourn and remember the rest. I know we're late. Mr. Foye, thank you.
And I'm going to save my comments till later on, too.
I'll go ahead and save mine, too.
Yeah, okay. And then, because we have 10 o'clock, and at this time, you know, this is a receiving file, a presentation recognizing the partnership with the Ochsart College Auto Tech Program. And I just want to thank Councilman Porello for sharing the partnerships that we have. You know, you shared about that. So today we have this item, and I want to welcome guests from Ochsart College. This item recognizes a successful partnership between Ochsart College Auto Tech Program and the County of Ventura General Services Agency. Over the last few years, the County of Ventura and Ochsart College have partnered to utilize a program that allows five students per year the opportunity to actually intern into county shops. This is a great way for students to see how these skills they have acquired or applied on the job in a real shop environment. And of course, these young folks also have the opportunity to look at employment opportunities within the County of Ventura. So at this time, I'd like to have our agency director, David Sasek, share a couple of words. He's got a little presentation. And after that, Mr. Sasek, I understand we have Richard Williams, an automotive instructor, and also trustee Art Hernandez here with us. So, and then after you finish, I have a couple of certificates I'd like to share. David, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza. Supervisors, Mr. Power, CEO. For the record, I'm Dave Sasek, the Director of the General Services Agency. And I do have a couple of slides, but I think the chair pretty much covered it, so I'll move through them fairly quickly. This is a program where we want to get the students from Ochsart College out with job readiness training actually in the workforce, focusing on, obviously, county residents here, and leveraging our facilities to try to improve the workforce readiness. The goals are getting them out in a school-to-work program here in our Fleet Operations Department, where they can actually learn in a workplace alongside seasoned professional journeymen while they're continuing to pursue their degrees. They earn their credit through the college while working with us. And it also, as the chair said, introduces them to the opportunity perhaps to come, become employees of the county later on after they complete their program. We started getting involved in this program about 2014 with the support of Dr. Christina Tofoya, the Dean of the Career and Technical Education Program. And it was adopted by their Board of Trustees in 2015 to allow them to come work, these students to come work part-time with the county while pursuing their degrees. And they'll be in their second year, so they've got a lot of their basic stuff under their belts, and then they can move on and actually turn wrenches with our journeymen. The students are actually selected by the instructors, and I think many of the instructors are here today as well. And we hire them for about a year. They can work at any of the three county garages, depending upon where we need them or, you know, where we can work it out. Typically, they work about four hours a day as they continue their education. So I think these instructors are here, Richard Williams, Kevin Course, Jeff Hibbin, and Anthony Diaz-Brown. And again, they've partnered with us well, and I think this is a good news story for the county, for the college, and for these students who are truly benefiting. We've had five students complete the program already, and we have five current students going through there. And I believe the students are here in the room today, and they'll probably come up at the appropriate time. But Anai Partita, Matthew Gallegos, Heather Evgen, Daniel Calderon, and Esteban Rodriguez are all currently working through this program with us. And they're spread around the county in different sites. Most of them are at the Saticoy Site, again, where our hub of operations is. So again, I really appreciate the board's recognition of this program. I think, you know, it's just a great example of good government partnering and leveraging our expertise and getting forward with the school, and we'd like to see this continue and grow going forward. So that concludes my presentation.
Okay, so we have Richard Williams. Is he here? And as it comes up, I just want to share, this is a great opportunity for individuals that are going to junior college, and if they don't want to go continue to university, there's an option then for, to study some technical, you know, programs, or automotive, electrical, or plumbing and so forth. But go ahead. Richard, can you go and share some more information with us?
You bet. We have an outreach program for years that has been reaching all the way back, not just into the high schools, but into the middle schools and even into some of the elementary schools. And we're now seeing students, after four, five, seven years, making their way into the college program because of that contact. And to have a contact with the outside through the county makes it an incredible opportunity for them to go from a, I don't know what I want to do, to here I'm now doing this. Okay? Jeff and Anthony have been doing our outreach for years. I've always said that Jeff could probably sell ice to Eskimos, but he's been doing a wonderful job. Kevin has come on board as our second full-time instructor. I'd also like to introduce Jose Artega, who's the lead at our body shop program. Do you have anything?
The opportunity that the county's given students is really incredible, to be able to have an internship, and it's a paid internship. Those, thank you very much. They enjoy the paychecks. And they know that the paychecks are tied to real work. So you have to show up on time, do your work, and then clock out. So this county opportunity is more than just something that is a fringe benefit. They really do get work experience. They get greasy, and they get dirty, and they solve problems, and I appreciate that. And you can see on their smiling faces, you should smile. Does it smile now? That they appreciate you as well. The dean and the college are very supportive. The dean and the college are very supportive, and I want to continue to make sure that goes forward.
Hey, John, just real quick, I mean, this is tremendous, I mean, first of all, Dave, you've got a facility that has got such a wide variety, that a lot of places you could go work on autos, but you could go truck, but this is, for these guys, there's so much opportunities, gets what you can do, and the idea that we're willing to do, this is one of those kind of things that you'd be proud the county's doing, that we're integrating in futures, because, you know, it's very expensive to set up something like this, to have all these kind of vehicles and coming in, and, I mean, these guys are probably putting lights on police cars and doing other stuff, I mean, it's just a lot of cool stuff that you're doing, so this is a great, great program, so thanks a lot, guys.
I just also want to share that, before I called Art Hernandez, the trustee, that my son, you know, he, I had somebody for him for college, so when he graduated from high school, he says, and says, "Okay, Johnny, what college are you going to?" He says, "I'm not." He said, "What?" "I'm going to the service," so he went in as a mechanic, came out as a mechanic, and now he's one of the, probably the head mechanics over at Procter &amp; Gamble, earning a hundred-some-thousand dollars a year, so it's a good trade.
Supervisor Zaragoza, if I could say, you know, we heard earlier about the shortage that we're going to have in terms of family physicians that are out there, but there's also going to be a huge shortage in this country of skilled labor that is out there, and these gentlemen are going to be really well positioned because of that shortage that's coming up, I mean, it's going to be a real crisis in America, so these kind of programs absolutely essential, thank you.
I just also want to say that we work to help the economy in every way we can, and we've done an economic vitality plan that we're looking at, and one of our goals and our strategic plan is, you know, helping businesses, but the whole idea that your businesses are going to be better if you have trained employees, and this is something the County of Ventura can do, they can actually help get interns here, help train those individuals so that they can have that job experience, which there's nothing that you can do better than having the job experience when you're out there looking for a job. And just lauding also Oxnard College, I think at one time, maybe a decade ago or so, we're talking about closing this program, if I recall correctly, I'm so glad that it's up, it's vibrant, and it's working, and then also to the young woman, go for it, it's nice to see, all right, it's wonderful to see you out here and doing that, because it's a non-traditional job, but it is certainly a good, definitely a good career that you can get into, and what you learn with this, whether it's automotive, or it goes on to other kinds of mechanical work, it is great experience, so congratulations to all of you.
Trustee Hernandez?
I want to thank the Board for taking this time out of your busy meeting to recognize such a great program. We're certainly proud of all our colleges, in particularly, who we're honoring today, Oxnard College, their auto tech program, and Supervisor Parks is right, it was about six years ago that we were under some real budget constraints, and it was the support from Supervisor Zaragoza and many in the city who came out, and ultimately our Board that made the decision that it was a program worth keeping, and this is the result of that, and the current county partnership is just so, so important, this is economic development at its just, at its level that we can see, and I think that there's other, when you think about the opportunities, and not just fleet services, of there's police cars within cities, and fire trucks, and all the multiple opportunities there are, and we're certainly proud of all the staff and all the hard work they do. I would like to introduce our new chancellor, Dr. Greg DeLisby, if you could come up, Greg. Greg is just completing his fifth week on the job, and...
Right.
So I want to, just again, thank you, and the county's been such a, we had some earlier business, we want to thank you for that, we also have, the county's been involved, want to thank Mike Pettit, who was offered, allowed Laura Barosa to be a part of our Chancellor Search Committee, who helped to select our chancellor, so the county and the partnership that we have going with the colleges and the mutual, just collaboration is really important to us, and we want to thank you for that.
Thank you, you want to say two words?
Yes, again, I'd just also like to thank the county for working with Oxnard College on this partnership, and I see it as just one of many opportunities that exists for us to work together and make great things happen, and creating trained workforce to meet the needs that we have, so thank you again for the recognition.
Thank you so much, and I have a certificate here, and I'd like to read this.
This is for, for Oxnard College, this is the Board of Supervisors, County of Ventura, State of California, commence Oxnard Automotive Program for your partnership with Ventura County General Services Agency Fleet Operations through participation in Ventura County School-to-Work Program, and give this to Oxnard College, and to the President? Here we go.
Congratulations, and we'll take some pictures in a minute, we have some more? We gave the ones to the students.
Okay, and we, of course, the students also got a certificate, and we'll take some photos here in a minute, I just want to thank you guys for an excellent work that you've done, it's an opportunity that I think most students don't realize that we have here in the County of Ventura, so it's going to help you ultimately. And I have this one here also, this is Board of Supervisors, County of Ventura, State of California, Commends the County of Ventura General Service Agency for your partnership, David, with Oxnard College Automotive Programs through participation in Ventura County School-to-Work Program, as is presented on the first day of August by the entire Board of Supervisors. David Sasek, thank you so much for your good work, and also to Peter, where's Peter? Thank you for your good work, Peter, and putting this thing together, and I'd like to then commend you for this, give it to Peter?
Oh, yes.
Okay, Peter.
Come on, if we take a photo. Come on down, come this way, and again, thank you to all the students, you know.
Dr. Azari is the case issue, she couldn't be here, so please accept her apologies.
You should get the front, Art, come on.
Supervisor Zaragoza, do you think you could have the interns introduce themselves?
Yes. Okay, are we ready? You want to introduce, where's the students?
Heather, Matt, Dan, Esteban.
You want to introduce them?
What do you want me to say?
Hi, hi, thank you for helping.
Hi, I'm Heather Avian. Speaking of her now, hi, I'm Heather Avian, and I'm very honored to be in this program, it has opened up a lot of doors for me, and a lot of opportunities that I haven't gotten to experience in my lifetime, thank you.
Hi, my name is Daniel Calderon, and I enjoyed the program, it helped me work with quarries and get a better perspective of what I'm getting into, so I could get a feel of the industry.
You sure you want to be a mechanic, and maybe a supervisor?
Hello, my name is Esteban Rodriguez, I really enjoy the program, I've learned a lot so far from heavy and regular automotive, and I really am honored for you guys to let me work on this, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Anai, and I'm in the body shop, and I just want to thank you guys, it's been a great experience, I've learned a lot, so thank you.
Hi, my name is Matthew Gallegos, and I work for the Saticoy Light Duty Shop, and I would like to thank everybody here for allowing us to be, you know, partnered with it, and it's just an awesome and great opportunity, so thank you, guys.
Do they teach you young people public speaking also? You handle that part of it really well, too.
And again, Board members, I want to thank again, Oxnard College and RMA for an excellent program, thank you so much for being here today. Thank you, our next item is item 54, and this is a receiving file, a presentation on the state mandated 2017 Ventura County Self-Assessment Five-Year Review of Children and Family Services, CEO?
All right, thank you Chairs Zaragoza, members of the Board, Mr. Powers, I'm Barry Zimmerman, Human Services Agency, and I'll be presenting a little overview of the self-assessment that we've gone through for the child welfare system. Also Gina Johnson from probation will also participate, since it's both our agency and Probations Agency that are responsible for children that are within the broader context of the foster care system here. The presentation is just an overview, as you have in the packet that's been submitted to you, or a report that is some 200-plus pages long, and so this is kind of giving you an overview of what that report is, and the process that we're going through right now that is required. So every five years, we have a requirement to review our system and establish system improvement goals associated with the child welfare system, and that's both for the Human Services Agency as well as probation, so we're in this stage of that right now, we've concluded a five-year period from 2012 to 2017, so we're starting the first step in that process of evaluating the system, identifying it, and targeting certain areas for improvement there. This is not done alone, this is a very comprehensive process, both agency, internal with the agency, as well as external stakeholders participate in this process, so we partner with others, the Child Abuse Prevention Council, which is also AKA known as the Partnership for Safe Families, and there's a Citizens Review Panel that participates heavily in this process, as well as input from the community. So this is the first step, and this is not by all means the final, but this is the first step, introducing our initial assessment to you as the Board, so you can have an understanding of what we've evaluated so far. The next step is to be more detailed in our performance goals, criteria, and discussing what we've performed over the last five years, and where we're going to go in the next five years, and that'll be known as the System Improvement Plan. And that's now, the next step, we'll be formalizing all this activity, then coming back to your Board in the November timeframe to go over the System Improvement Plan. So with the initial assessment, you have the opportunity to review and provide any input that you'd want prior to that point, and then we will finalize that, and that will go to the state as well. So this is the, some of the inputs associated with the self-assessment, we've done agency-wide activities, surveys, all levels of staff have participated in it, as well as outside communities, families, and so forth participate in the process through discussions, focus groups, data analysis, a lot of data that goes through, we have our manager that manages the data here, Anne Reyes-Robins, she's right there, does a lot of data analysis for us in that, which is a primary focus for us, to focus in on areas of concern. So the overview of the assessment so far can be summarized in this slide here, there. There are 35 key performance measures that oversee the activities within the child welfare system broadly of that, and our initial findings show that 24 of those 35 measures were meeting or exceeding them, eight of them were near, some of them are fractional off in that regard to that, and three that were not achieving those goals. So overall, a pretty good outcome of our initial assessment, but as we're looking here, it's not necessarily a great activity, but we want to look for areas of improvement, and areas that we can focus in on, and so that will be our goal. The three areas, I just wanted to highlight the measures below that are there, are reentry of foster children within 12 months, we are not meeting the standard, authorized for psychotropic medication is higher than the state average, and obtaining employment is below the standard. Some of these standards have national standards, some of them have national and state, some of them just have state standards, and then there are areas that we'll just choose on our own to have an improvement activity in that regard. I can go into the details of those standards, in particular, the ones that we did not meet, but we are assessing those, and those will be discussed in greater detail in the System Improvement Plan, especially if they become a focus area associated with the System Improvement Plan. In general, this is our progress from the last five-year period, there are 11 national standards associated with national standards, or measures that have national standards of them, these are nine of them, all made positive improvement through that five-year period, which is a very positive direction that we made. As you can tell, some standards you want to decrease on, and other standards you want to increase on, so, but we indicated the trend there for you to show that the positive direction in those outcome measures. So we achieved positive direction in nine of 11, two of the 11 are ones that we've identified here, in particular, the reentry of foster care within 12 months is one area. Also, another concern area was within permanency, children that have been in the system 24 months or longer aren't at the rate of permanency that we would like to see, and so that would be an area of focus as well. And also placement stability, after 1,000 days in foster care is also a focus area that we'll be looking at throughout. So we don't just, we also look at the, not just the criteria of performance, but we look at strengths within the system as well, and what is going on within the context of the organizational environment associated with the system and the delivery of services. Here are some of the strengths that have been identified, organizational commitments to safety organized practice, which goes hand-in-hand with what you've been presented with continuum care reform, which involves families and inputs from multiple vested parties within the child's life in order to come up with the best plan. So safety organized practice brings all that together in a modeled approach that we've implemented throughout the agency there. Also, one of our strengths is the increased support for staffing and maintaining caseloads associated with the work that is found in the child welfare system, very positive for us there, that we've been able to lower those, which also increase the quality of care associated with each family that comes in contact with our system there. It is, we continually monitor that, we do have some challenges in the future coming up with the new requirements associated with the continuum care reform, or CCR, and the added mandates, and so we'll be discussing that in context of our whole evaluation as well. To note, within the staff ranks there, 86% of all the staff have master's degree leveled, degrees or qualifications in the system. By state, the state regulations require a minimum of 50%, and so we feel very favorable in our efforts to recruit and retain a high-quality level of staff associated with the services that are being performed. Additional strengths are our partnerships within the county family, as well as within the community services, there's been over the the last year, great collaboration within the behavioral health system, in which we've piloted a program, for short, known as PAS, but the priority access to service and support has been a modeled program for the state, in which we're able to take parents that need to be assessed, associated with behavioral health issues, and be able to assess them and engage them within fifteen days. So there's a three-step process with timelines of five days each, and all the families have been referred to that. About seventy percent have achieved that milestone of fifteen days' access, and that would be access, not just an appointment, but they'll be assigned a clinician and be able to start treatment or intervention at that point, which is tremendous. It's not commonplace around the state to have that kind of response and interaction at that pace. So partnerships are very important. Collaboration with the Citizen Review Panel has been critical throughout the process. They meet regularly, monthly, to go over data, as well as qualitative input discussions and so forth. There are twenty-three members associated with that panel that represent both internal county representation, but external community providers and citizens as well sit on that. Family engagement has been a big priority. Not only is it a big thrust of CCR and the philosophy of the safety organized practice, but receiving input from families and understanding what they go through has been a strength in which has supported this assessment overall. In summary, this is kind of a bubble chart to narrow down the two-hundred-some pages in statistical reports, to put in kind of what we're focusing in right now of areas that would be areas of concern. So the four bubbles in the middle are really the target areas of concern. So reentry for infants under one is a measure that we'd like to improve upon, and so that would be one target area. As well as, we've noted in the demographic studies within the assessment, showing a disproportionality of children or entries into the system in certain geographical areas, one in Oxnard and Port Oneimi area, as well as through ethnicity, the Latino children is an area of focus, to understand better why the rates are higher disproportionately in the community in those populations. So that would be a population concern target that we'd be looking at, as well as children in permanency that have been in the system over twenty-four months. That is another concern area that came out through the assessment that will be focused on further. In particular, anyone twenty-four months or longer in congregate care is a very, has very low permanency standards, and we do want to improve upon that. So that's where it is. Those aren't finalized at this point, but that starts to focus the assessment into that cluster there. The surrounding bubbles are kind of the strategies that have been discussed thus far, that would be activities, initiatives, as well as systems that would have an impact on those focal, focus areas there. And so more will be developed in concrete fashion of the strategies that would be put in place to deal with the focus areas that are being identified at this point in time. So in a nutshell, that is the first step, and that is the assessment process of the system, and kind of a real high-level summary of the report that has been provided to you. Supervisor?
Two things, because I know you're going on to probation agency county self-assessment. So before we leave this, just two things. Number one, in the bubble, expanded foster home recruitment, you know, over the last sixteen years, just how many things are affected by how many foster homes we have available. I mean, your ability to get, you know, youth into more permanent places and all of that, and now with the new state legislation. So I know we have dramatically upgraded our efforts there, but we're looking for a different kind of home, and so it sort of changes our statistics in terms of, we're looking for people that are more committed to the whole family and not just of the child, et cetera. But I would like to hear more information, and I think we should have steady updates so that we keep this front and center for us, you know, for this whole board to be aware of where we are with this effort, because it's like, not everything, but so much revolves around the number of foster homes that we have out there. And then the second thing is, could you go back to your fifth slide, I believe? It's the one that has progress since last system improvement cycle, and I appreciate seeing all the progress and where the numbers are going down. I assume that's a positive.
That is.
Yeah, right, with that. But it would be helpful if this chart also had the goal or the standard. Is there a standard for each one of these?
There are standards for each one of those.
So it would be helpful to know how far away we are from the standard with each of those.
Each of the performance standards exceeded the state or national standard shown here. So nine of the eleven did exceed all the standards, state and national.
Okay.
But we can, we can get you the actual number by the percent.
Even if we're, if we're over by a lot, that'd be good for us to know.
Sure, absolutely. We'll give you that marker.
Great, thank you.
Also, if I may, since we've been interrupted here, one is, this is in about four-point text font, if we could get our hard copies so we can read them too. But the question I have, I believe in a previous presentation, my concern regarding the number of foster youth on psychotropic medication, I believe we were doing better, or at least reported to be doing better than standards, the state standard, and now it seems as though we are not. So could you?
Yeah, it's a point, it's a little bit of a point in time measure. There's about a hundred kids at any cohort time period that you look that are associated with psychotropic medications, and so the measure does swing up and down. At the point that we did measure here, we were low, or we were not meeting this, the standard that we were achieving, but.
Which, when you say low, that means that we have more kids on these drugs than what should?
Yes, than what the state average would dictate, or would give us a barometer associated with that. So that swings up and down. We're on the margin, so that it is still considered an area of focus, because we do want to be well within the purview of what should be the standard throughout the state.
Because I know it was reported, I remember reading, I think, the Los Angeles Times, and it was reported that, and based on other populations of children, they have a higher concentration of these. And I think at the time, we were going to be looking at those cases and making sure, you know, re-reviewing them, making sure from a medical perspective that they are indeed necessary.
Yeah, absolutely. So this past year, we were, we entered in agreements with the state to receive more direct data to be able to monitor the medications that are issued associated with the children. So we are getting that information now. Also, just a new state law has been, been effective to, to put responsibility on the public health to integrate with us greater to track and monitor psychotropic medications, and so we're building that partnership as well. So I believe it will be a focus area that we'll be looking at on how to improve.
And I just wonder, other than just monitoring it, is there an education program going to the physicians that may be routinely prescribing the psychotropic drugs?
Yeah, so part of the monitoring is to identify, you know, the issuing physicians, those type things, and part of to bring public health into it is have that interaction on the medical side. So that's really where it's at. Recently, public health had a conference on that, and so they're very interested in working with the physician industry to understand the need for and the usage of psychotropic medication.
If I could get more information on that to my office, I would appreciate it, just where exactly we stand and more of a historic look at it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Barry, on the, the focus area, to enhance family finding efforts for the children in Oxnard and South Oxnard and Port Oneimi, I think is extremely important, you know, for, especially for the Latino youth, because my understanding is that we've had a hard time finding families for those children. Is that correct?
In general, we want to, our first priority is to find families, and so finding the family member qualified and willing is the task at hand, and so that is an area and a constant area to work on that we'll target to improve. The success of children to be stayed with relatives is much higher than to put them in a different setting. So that will be it, that will be our focus.
And I noticed that's the expansion to pass on to parents and children, you know, to work with the, that's important, I think.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Any additional questions? Are you still, go ahead.
Yeah, probation has their assessment to cover as well.
So, good morning, Chair of the Board, members of the Board. Mr. Powers stepped out. You're going to hear a lot of the same information that Mr. Zimmerman just presented. A lot of our issues are the same. By the way, I'm Gina Johnson, and I'm here representing Mark Varela, who's on vacation, so thank you for having me. I just wanted to also point out that with our probation youth, they're a very unique population. They're very difficult to place. Their needs tend to be very intense, and surrounding such issues as intense mental health issues, sex offender issues, and other behavior health issues, I mean behavioral, excuse me, behavior issues. So with our population, let me see, we had similar results in that with the psychotropic medication, we did see a decrease, but it is something that we are looking at, given the questions that you were asking. What was interesting about this review is that our overall probation population has decreased, but we've seen an increase in the placement population. And so we're keeping an eye on that and the reasons to that, and some of it is philosophical presentations in court that are veering youth towards placement. The one issue that we did not do so well on is permanency, much the same as with HSA. It is a difficult population to get back home. Our youth tend to spend eighteen months or more in placement. With the community of care, our continuum of care reform, it is placing some more difficulties on our ability to place youth. With the implementation of the short-term residential treatment, we anticipate that placements are going to be more and more difficult to find. And so we are working statewide with our partners in probation to speak with legislators and also CDSS to prepare the state to have more short-term residential treatment for, specifically for probation youth. An exciting thing about what we're doing with HSA is that we too have implemented family team meetings, and our staff are trained in safety organized practice. And what's also telling about our team is that we have about five officers, two of which are here, who manage all of our placement youth. And so we are very fortunate to be able to collaborate with HSA, behavioral health, and public health, because together we train and we work on policies and procedures as we move forward. And so we kind of capitalize on their experiences. The other thing too, as Barry mentioned, the work that our staff do is very impactful, and they do suffer from secondary trauma. And I'm happy to report to you also that both HSA and probation have very robust peer support programs, and that helps assist our officers in dealing with the day-to-day trauma that they take on, as well as working with the youth. And we're hopeful that all of these efforts will improve services and encourage self-care for our staff, which will hopefully impact the rest of the system of this care. Many of the areas focused for the pending system improvements plan will be similar to what Mr. Zimmerman presented, us focusing mostly on permanency planning, and then also keeping youth out of placement altogether. We actively, as you know, participate in the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, and our main goal is to keep youth out of custody and to keep youth home, and so we're hopeful for our next system improvement plan. So, thank you.
Thanks, Gina. Any questions of Gina? Okay, Barry?
Receive and file.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, what's the question?
Make the motion to receive and file, and I would also like to request that we jump to the item fifty-six, the employee recognition, before we do fifty-five, just because we have the employees here now in the room.
Okay, one of the things that I also want to share with you, that I'd like to have a motion, because I have a request. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, let's vote on this one first. Please vote. And that's approved. I have a request here to make, I need a motion to postpone item fifty-seven and fifty-eight, so the people are waiting for item fifty-seven, fifty-eight. So, Board members, I need a motion to postpone item fifty-seven and fifty-eight. So we got a first and a second.
Could you be more specific? I don't know about this kind of vote.
Well, just to postpone, or continue.
To a different day.
To a different day. Okay. Alrighty, so then, our next item, then, we'll go ahead and, fifty-eight?
Move fifty-eight, be postponed, continued?
Okay, please vote. Okay, so our next item is item fifty-six. This is a receiving file, a presentation of quarterly service recognition for employees with twenty-five years or more of county services. Our CEO's office.
Thank you, Chair Aragosa, Board members. Thank you for the time today. This is one of the things that's most important to us, is to recognize our employees who've committed their careers to working here at the county, and we love to see them, and we love to see all the county family and their peer support groups who come to support them. So, thank you for being here, and let's get to it. I'll turn it over to our HR Director, Sean Otten.
Thank you so much, Mike. Chairs, Aragosa, members of the Board, thank you again. It's my privilege on your behalf to recognize, recognize the folks that have twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five. We have a fifty-year service award today also. There are.
Did you say fifty?
Five-zero.
What, do we have four or five employees combined? That's fantastic.
So with that said, as I read their names, if they wouldn't mind please coming up front, accepting their certificate, and then stay here for the end, and then we'll take a group photo. Mike, Mr. Powers, and I are going to tag-team some of these, so we'll make that run flawlessly, I'm sure. So with that said, let's start. So the first person we're going to recognize is Mary Elena Miller. She's a Welfare Investigator III from the District Attorney's Office and has twenty-five years of service. Mary Elena, she began her career with the DA's office in nineteen ninety-two and promoted from support staff to sworn welfare fraud investigator. She is very well-respected, is a tenacious investigator, and equally regarded for her generous and thoughtful spirit. Thank you, Mary Elena, and for your service, we appreciate it. Next, we have Fong White, who is an Office Assistant III with DCSS and has twenty-five years of service. Fong's work ethic and contributions are valued and appreciated by DCSS and her team. Her attention to detail, accuracy, and excellent document processing skills have benefited the families we all serve. Throughout her career as a public servant, Fong has contributed to the DCSS mission statement by treating the public and fellow employees with respect, fairness, and dignity. Thank you, Fong, for your twenty-five years of service. Thank you. Mr. Satar Zai is not here. Oh, he is here. I'm so sorry. Next is Sultan Satar Zai. He is an operating room tech III and works at the healthcare agency and has twenty-five years of service. Sultan is a valued HCA employee who enjoys working in the operating room and can usually be found working the second shift. He has many interests and is a fantastic storyteller. He enjoys hiking and hikes close to the Reagan Library before work every day.
Every day.
Every day. Thank you, Sultan, for your service, and good hiking. Thank you, Sultan, for your service, and good hiking. Rebecca Swift is a senior registered nurse, and works with the healthcare agency, and has 25 years of service. Becky has loved her nursing career at VCMC. She began as a trauma RN, where she loved the thrill of saving lives, and is now the intensive case manager for VCMC Emergency Department, where she focuses on what resources she can offer to our patients after treatment, so their aftercare is achievable. Becky is a valued member of our ER team, and continues to make a difference every day she is here at VCMC. James Barone is a senior medical examiner investigator at the healthcare agency, at the medical examiner's office. He has 25 years of service. James started working at the medical examiner's office in 1989 as an extra-help forensic technician, assisting the pathologists in performing autopsies, and becoming the full-time forensic technician in 1992. In 97, after assisting in about 2,000 autopsies, he was promoted to the medical examiner investigator. James's main goal is to make things as easy as possible for the families he meets through his death investigations, as it is usually one of the worst days of their lives. James likes to spend his spare time with his children, and enjoys camping, diving, playing drums, and watching TV with the kids. Thank you for your service. Donna Martinez, program analyst, two, works at HSA, Human Services Agency. She has 25 years of service. Donna has held many positions during her career at the HSA, ranging from worker to lead worker supervisor, and most recently, the staff development program analyst. Donna is always willing to share her expertise with staff, and has had many success stories training new staff. She's demonstrated the agency's value of clients come first, providing good customer service to the external customers. Thank you for your service, appreciate it. Letty Hernandez is an employment specialist, three, also at the HSA, and has 25 years Letty has been a dedicated public servant, working with a diverse group, first as an eligibility worker for CalWorks, then in the foster care program, and finally in her current position as an employment specialist for the past 16 years. Each of these positions have required Letty to work with individuals who have had their lives disrupted in one form or another. She has provided them with services and opportunities, and understanding needed to help them continue their lives in caring in a seamless manner. Congratulations and thank you. Laura Baroso is ITSD HR Manager. She has, she works at the ITSD, IT Department, and has 25 years of service. Laura has been a dedicated employee, first with HSA, and most recently with IT. Laura enjoys spending time with her friends and family, traveling with her husband, and enjoying the outdoors by walking. She walks a lot, as we know through our wellness program. She's always the winner and traverses the globe several times, so. She also runs in her spare time. When asked what the best thing is about working for the county, Laura states that it's definitely the people she's met along the way, and the wonderful mission of the County of Ventura. Congratulations and thank you. Ms. Ann Favor is a chief defender, chief public defender investigator at the Public Defender's Office, and has 25 years of service. Ann started her career as an investigative assistant, quickly promoting to supervising investigator for five years before becoming the chief public defender investigator. She's been the chief for the past 13 years, and oversees a unit of 16 public defender investigators. Ann has two beautiful daughters, and enjoys traveling with her husband to Palm Springs and the island of Jamaica, which she's fallen in love with also. In fact, she travels to Jamaica every year. Thank you, Ann, for your service. Next is Masood Jalani Kujuri, engineering manager, two, Public Works. Masood has 25 years of service, and has risen through the ranks, and currently works as an engineering manager, two, in the district's design and construction division. Over his years of service, Masood has designed or managed, designed and construction of projects worth over $50 million, reducing the flood threat to thousands of citizens living in the County of Ventura. He enjoys watercolor painting, and lives in Camarillo with his two children and wife, and his wife works for the, as a physician in the Ventura County Healthcare System also. So, thank you, Masood, for your years of service. Sergio Vargas, deputy director, Public Works, 25, has 25 years of service. Sergio earned his bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Long Beach State University, a good, good school. He's a professional engineer and a certified plane, flood plane manager, who's been active in the flood management, land management, land development, and water resources engineering field for more than 30 years. As a deputy director of the Planning and Permits Division for the Ventura County Watershed Protection District, Sergio is responsible for a variety of programs, such as planning, the Integrated Watershed Protection Plan, flood plane management services, the community rating system, environmental services and permits, and a lot more, I'm sure. So, thank you, Sergio, for your service. We appreciate it. Okay, next is Michael Coroni. He's custodian, three. He works at the GSA, and he has 30 years of service, so we really appreciate his service. Michael is one of two staff responsible for housekeeping and emergency calls for the Government Center and outlying facilities. And in the past, he has been responsible for VCMC housekeeping, and Government Center HOA and HOJ housekeeping. He was a Navy reservist at Point Magoo from 1983 to 1988, and plays basketball with the men's league on Sundays. He enjoys attending concerts, sporting events, is an avid movie fan. Michael is also a caregiver to his father, and is thrilled to have recently gotten engaged. He loves to travel, and his particular place is Hawaii, I think, so, good for you. Congratulations, Michael. Next, we have Sheriff's Captain Don Aguilar. He has 30 years of service. Don has thoroughly enjoyed 30 years of experience with the Sheriff's Office. He's passionate about mentoring and leading people, which is why he's been dedicated to teaching and training peace officers in the Basic Academy and in-service training since 1994. Don obtained his master's degree at Cal State Long Beach in 2009, and is also a graduate of the California Post Supervisory Leadership Institute and the Executive Development Course. Thank you, Don, for your dedication.
Thank you, Sean. So, you know, you hear all the intensity of this work, and there's 9,000 employees and all that, and so, there's a lot of stress sometimes, right? And so, we're just so fortunate to have a wonderful Office of Employee Assistance Program, the EAP Program. And it's our privilege today to honor two of the bedrocks, the pillars of that system, Mary Walker and Scott Bearish. And so, yeah. So, each of them 30 years of service. So, Mary began her career as an extra-help student worker, and was hired as the first senior typist clerk for the Employee Assistance Program in 1986. Soon after, it was said of Mary that her temperament, self-sufficiency, reliability, and independence are highly valued qualities, which have increased the efficiency of the EA program greatly. Thirty years have passed, and Mary still exemplifies these qualities, which have contributed immensely to the long-term success of the EAP. Now a program assistant, she remains the primary administrative support, as well as empathetic voice of the EAP. She has endured herself with the employee community, and EAP staff rely on her judgment, efficiency, and wealth of knowledge. Nicknamed Radar O'Reilly, look, I don't see the resemblance, but. Mary's presence has served to strengthen not only the integrity of the program, but also its longstanding reputation as a quality asset to county. Congratulations, Mary, on a fantastic 30 years. Scott Bearish has been an integral part of the off-site confidential county's Employee Assistance Program, first as a member of professional staff, and the last 26 years as the director, leading the program. As the vast majority of what he and the staff has assembled to do is strictly confidential, it's difficult to tell you about all he has done. But we've been told by numerous valued employees that they and their families have been helped through incredibly tough, stressful times by Scott and his staff. Suffice it to say, suffice it to say, that in the 30 years Scott has been with us, he and those he leads have contributed almost immeasurably to the success of this county organization. We have been, and will hopefully long continue to be extremely fortunate for his presence and efforts in county. Congratulations, Scott. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Selva Anne Mesral, maintenance engineer with GSA with 35 years of experience. Selva is a maintenance engineer with GSA, and the only female still in this position. Over the course, woo-hoo, in the course of 35 years with the county, she has assisted with the cleanup after the Northridge quake in 1994, helped train housekeeping staff in club, including fellow honoree, Mike Corone, and helped clean and prep the telephone road and Camarillo animal services facilities prior to their openings. She has two stepchildren and six grandchildren. She's also an animal lover with two dogs of her own, and frequently minds her sister's dogs. A former Army brat, Selva has never lost her love of travel, and wishes she could do it more often. Thank you, Selva, for your 35 years of outstanding service. Thank you. Trini's not here. Oh, Trini? Is Trini here?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, good, good. Oh, yeah. All right. That's what I thought, I thought the planning, RMA team back there, okay. Jose Trinidad Mendoza, known as Trini, is a building inspector, three, from RMA. Forty-five years, and he's still smiling. That's great, I love it. Trini started in the planning division, and then transferred to building and safety. Over the years, he has become well-known and respected by his coworkers and the public as a subject matter expert in his field. Trini is a certified building, plumbing, and mechanical inspector, and serves the division as its plumbing and mechanical specialist inspector and plans examiner. Trini has been recognized for his accomplishments, his commitment, passion, expertise, and contributions by the local IA PMO, which is the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials Chapter, where he has served on numerous committees and held board offices, including president. Congratulations, and thank you, Trini, for 45 years of outstanding service. So, our final honoree today is Shannon Anne Matlock, who's Assistant Director, Hospital Nursing for the Healthcare Agency, and she has been a proud employee of the county and the healthcare agency for 50 years. One of Shannon's main duties is to serve as house supervisor of the hospital, so that means when we all go home, she's there at the hospital running things. And so, she's not able to make it today, hopefully she's home resting, I'm sure, from another long shift. But anyway, so, Shannon began her career at VCMC 50 years ago as a nursing attendant, and worked throughout the hospital. She soon realized that she loved the field of nursing, and returned to school to become a registered nurse. She worked in the NICU and upon the opening of the unit, and very much enjoyed her patients. For the past two decades, Shannon has fulfilled the role of house supervisor, and has touched the lives of many VCMC nurses over the years. We also appreciate and value Shannon's contributions to VCMC over the 50 years, and we congratulate Shannon, and thank you for your service, your 50 years of service in the county. And accepting on her behalf is Kim Millstein, the CEO of VCMC. Thank you. Fortunately for Shannon, I had no role in picking those flowers out. Thank you, Polly. Beautiful, well deserved. So, I just want to take a minute to just say thank you. So, this is 525 years of collective service, right here in this room. But that's, your dedicated, your lives and your careers and your family has supported you in doing that. So, you just hear all the great commitment and passion and compassion that all of you have. This is the strength of our county right here. So, just thank you for letting us recognize you today, and for all of your peers as well. Congratulations, thank you.
Michael, Michael, I, Michael, thank you so much to all the employees, you know, the 525 years, you know, of employment here with the county. And between Shannon and Trini, it's almost 100 years of the 525. And also the 35 years, we have, what, Selma, you know, she, I call her up in my office, and she's right there all the time. Thank you for the good work. And of course, Scott and Mary for 30 some years, and all the 25 years of individuals that are here, thank you so much for your good work. You are the guys that take care of the constituency, which is really, really important to all of us. Thank you again for excellent, excellent work, and for the 525 years. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll do a group, a group picture, camp picture, so maybe we'll have board members come down too.
All right, this one's for all the cell phones, ready? One, two, three. Okay, this one's for me. One, two, three. And one more, please. One, two, three.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Our next item is item 55, in this public hearing regarding adoption of an amendment to 2016, 2019 MOA between the County of Ventura and Local 721 Service Employees International to allow recipients market-based premium pay, and receive a market-based adjustment, and waive a second hearing. Jim?
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Powers, I'm Jim Dombowski from Human Resources and Labor Relations.
And this is public hearing too, by the way.
And I'm here to recommend that you hold the public hearing regarding an amendment to correct section 622 of the agreement with Local 721 of SEIU, and that you waive the second public hearing, and at the conclusion of the hearing, that you adopt the recommended amendment.
That is how the package was costed and presented to the union at the bargaining table, and based on that language and costing, that is how the union presented it to its members for ratification. Further, that is exactly how the package was costed for the purposes internally here for the CEO and the members of your board. All who were employed in specified classes were to get the market-driven benefit. Now, here's the rub. In the bargaining that led to the prior MOA, employees eligible to receive a market-based premium were as per Section 622 of that MOA specifically excluded from receiving the MBA because of a single sentence in Section 622. Unfortunately, despite the best planning and representations by the county to the union and to your board during the recent bargaining, and all the understandings that were based on those representations, the exclusionary language in that other part of the contract was simply overlooked, and it was not struck. Should have been, it wasn't. We come before you today, then, to ask that we correct that, or we have that oversight corrected. Again, truly no-cost correction. As previously noted, the total costs associated with the MOA, current MOA, is approved by your board, were in part based on calculations that all within the classifications would receive the indicated MBA. Local 721 has supported this, and it has been reviewed and approved by County Council and the Auditor Controller. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Jim. Sean, do you have?
Yes, thank you. Just a very quick note on these two very important tools that the county uses, a market-based adjustment and a market-based premium payment. The market-based premium payment section in the memorandum of agreement with the SEIU still stands as it's intended to operate. It's a flexible tool where we, within the term of the MOA, we're able to look at the competitiveness of our base salaries, and we're able to adjust it, and that will operate as intended. And of course, the market-based adjustment is something we negotiate while, you know, while we negotiate the whole term of the agreement. So, there's really no intent to change the market-based premium section of this MOA, and the money's paid to these people as intended in the negotiations will be taken into account as we look at the competitiveness of their salaries going forward.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions, Sean?
I appreciate that last part of that comment, because there was some concern about, we already have one, we're doing both, and it sounds like it's going on, and it's just... You already take it into account before you...
Precisely. And just a quick note, this obviously has been, the market-based premium portion of the MOA has been some topic of discussion at the Board of Retirement as it pertains to pensionability, which is a completely different subject matter than what we've negotiated at the table. But as a result of those discussions, we are looking at how the market-based premiums are calculated, and we'll be happy to review it with the union and the Board of Retirement to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
I appreciate that. Well, thank you. Thank you, Supervisor.
My question is, we have, we've had this language similar in many of our other agreements, so what are we doing to make sure we don't have this oversight again?
Right.
And we've, I've obviously, hopefully, checked all the other ones to make sure we don't have this oversight.
Absolutely. It was a thing that, it was an oversight in cleaning up the documentation at the, when it was perfected, the MOA was perfected. So, we'll definitely make sure that those measures are put in place as we go forward, the quality checking.
And SEIU is in agreement, Sean? Sean, does SEIU is in agreement?
Yes. Mr. Dombowski has been directly in touch with Danny Correa, the SEIU representative.
Okay. Jim?
And if I may, response to you, Supervisor Zaragoza, there is an attachment that shows SEIU has agreed with the amendment itself. And to you, Supervisor, benefit, I believe this is the only contract that has the MBPP. Other contracts, as you've noted, do have the MBA. We have that in several other agreements, but this was the only other contract that has the MBPP in the MOA. There's a lot of acronyms there.
Okay, good. But before we vote, you know, this is a public hearing. I'm opening the public hearing. I don't have any speakers on this.
No, they use those acronyms to confuse us, that's all.
Okay. On this item, so I'm closing the public hearing. Okay. There is a motion to approve in a second. Please vote. And that is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next item is Item 60, and this is the Healthcare Agency, and this is approved and authorized, approved authorization of the Healthcare Agency Director to administer and update annually in accordance with the federal poverty level guidelines in the County of Ventura Healthcare Agency Payment Policy and Charity Care Policy and Rate Scheduled for Hospital Ambulatory Care, Clinic, and Urgent Care Based Services, effective today.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, Board of Supervisors, CEO Mike Powers. My name is Deepupa, Deputy Director, Managed Care, Patient Accounting, and I stand before you today representing a team of HCA and CEO leadership that has created multiple policies. I'm going to touch on them briefly. So, first and foremost, the proposed discount payment policy provides assistance for financially-qualified patients who are at or below 350% of the federal poverty guidelines. In addition, we have expanded that to offer it to all constituents irregardless of federal poverty level. The second policy is our charity care policy for patients whose family income does not exceed 350% of the federal poverty level and do not have monetary assets in excess of $10,000. The third policy is a sliding fee discount payment policy that's governed by the HERSA PIN, which applies to the federally-qualified health clinics within our system. The discounted fees are applicable to all patients whose family income does not exceed 200% of the FPL. Also attached is a grid, and the grid was very thoughtfully and carefully developed by our team. There are certain guidelines, there are laws that have changed as of late, one being that you can only charge up to a maximum of 100% of the greater of either the Medi-Cal or Medicare fee schedule. The second is that when applicant applies for the self-pay discount program and they file a application, with regard to their income, they can discount that income with a host of living expenses, which brings the total payment or repayment cannot exceed 10% of that net disposable income for the constituents. It was really important to our HCA leadership, as well as the CEO's office, that we formulated grid so that when our constituents present at our clinics or at our hospital, they have a gauge for what the expected out-of-pocket expense would be. We incorporated the three policies into one grid for simplicity. So, we're looking for your approval, and if you have any questions, I have a full supportive team here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. I have some speakers too that... Do the Board have any questions, Deepupa, at this time before the speakers? If not, I'm going to give three minutes each, and I have Rosio Gonzalez, followed by Guadalupe Vasquez, three minutes.
Good afternoon, Chairman Zaragoza, Board of Supervisors, and CEO Michael Powers. My name is Rosio Gonzalez, and I'm the Health Policy Advocate with the Mixteco Indigenous Community Organizing Project. Today, we're here to support the self-pay discount program and charity care program. MYcop, the Mixteco Project, is invested in supporting the uninsured and underinsured community of Ventura County, specifically the indigenous immigrant community. According to the UCLA California Health Interview Survey, 19.6% of Ventura County residents are uninsured, which is lower than the California rate of uninsured, which is 21.4%. However, when we compare cities within the county, the differences are stark. In Santa Paula, the rate is 31%, and in El Rio, the uninsured rate is 29.5%. This data becomes even more alarming when we focus on the indigenous immigrant community. My team of community health workers, or promotoras, conducted over 192 surveys, and all of participants are indigenous Mexican. I brought copies of the preliminary highlights for you and your staff, but according to our analysis, 57.3% of women do not have health insurance, and 65.4% of men do not have health insurance. Unfortunately, 74.8% of those individuals surveyed did not know about the discount program offered by the county. My team of four promotoras are with me here today. They conducted outreach to approximately 2,943 people in county in regards to our Health Access Guide, which outlines the discount payment program and other various resources available for community members who are uninsured or underinsured. We want to thank the Healthcare Agency Director and staff for meeting with MYcop to collaborate on how to best serve the indigenous immigrant and uninsured community in Ventura County. We look forward to continuing to working with the agency, and we welcome any opportunity to work with the Board of Supervisors and the CEO to ensure all of our community members have care when and where they need it. Thank you, and I will be interviewing for some of the testimonies that my promotoras will be sharing.
Thank you, Rosio. We have, okay, Guadalupe Vasquez, followed by Inez Gonzalez. So, you're going to translate for her?
Yes.
Okay.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Guadalupe Vasquez. Nací en Oaxaca y crecí en la Ciudad de México. Mi primer lengua es mixteco, y soy promotora de salud en Proyecto Mixteco.
Good morning. My name is Guadalupe Vasquez. I was born in Oaxaca.
Rosio, get closer to the mic.
I was born in Oaxaca. I grew up in the city, Mexico City. My first language is mixteco, and I'm a promotora for MYcop. Llegué a los Estados Unidos hace 12 años y vivo en Oxnard. El día que yo llegué estaba llena de miedo. Al desconocer el país y al separarme de mi familia fue muy duro. The day that I came, I came to the United States 12 years ago, and I live in Oxnard. The day that I came to this country, I felt full of fear. I didn't know this country. I was separated from my family, and it was a very difficult time for me.
Al llegar a un país que no conocía su idioma y lo difícil que era para mí trasladarme de un lugar a otro, conseguí trabajo en el field. Dos meses de estar trabajando en el field, me caí y me lastimé la cadera, y no podía moverme muy bien ya que tenía dolor si hacía movimientos como agacharme. Era un dolor muy fuerte.
So, I came to this country, and I didn't know the language. It was a very difficult time for me to go to places, but after some time, I got a job working in the field. After two months, I began to have, I fell, and I began to have a pain every time I moved. Every time I would go down, bend over to pick the fruit, it would hurt very, very much, and it was a very strong pain.
El encargado del field me mantó a la clínica a la cual yo asistí, pero al día siguiente me mandaron a trabajar. Yo no podía caminar muy bien y me pusieron a trabajar como sorteadora.
I went to a clinic with one of the supervisors, but they told me that I was still supposed to work the next day. Since I wasn't able to pick fruit anymore, they put me as a sorter.
No tenía experiencia, pero ellos querían que trabajara y lo hice.
I didn't have experience...
Aunque era difícil estar parada, me movía constantemente para poder colocarme de una manera que no me lastimara.
I didn't have any experience in this position, but I tried my best, and it was also painful for me to be a sorter, but I would put myself in various movements, and I would just try my best so that it wouldn't be as painful as it actually did feel.
El trabajo de sorteadora fue muy poco, muy poco tiempo, y regresé como pescadora. Yo acepté esto ya que temía perder el trabajo y ya debía la renta.
They did not give me many hours as a sorter, so I decided to go back to picking fruit. Even though it still hurt a lot, I needed to do that so that I could pay and afford my rent.
Fueron momentos difíciles, pero recuperé después de algunos meses.
It was a very difficult time for me, but I was able to recuperate.
No pude ir al doctor porque el único que conocía era un doctor particular, el cual me cobraba mucho para la consulta, y el dinero que yo ganaba no era mucho, y necesitaba pagar la renta, la comida, y la ropa.
I could not go to the doctor because the one that I knew about was too expensive, and I only had enough money to pay for rent, to pay for food and clothes for my children. I decided to just hold on to the pain.
Yo prefería aguantarme el dolor que tenía. Desconocía los programas de descuento en las clínicas y también las clínicas, porque cuando se tiene trabajo más de ocho horas y lo difícil que es, no le da tiempo a uno para hacer otra cosa, y todos los días se tiene que preparar para otro día de trabajo.
I did not know about the discount payment program at the clinics, and I didn't have time, after working all day in the fields, to go look for other help, and so I was unable to do anything else besides work and focus on my field.
En otra ocasión, me salió un quiste y me lastimaba. Fui con el doctor particular, y el dinero que me cobraba era mucho, pero como no tenía conocimiento de otras clínicas que de descuento, tuve que pagar la consulta.
Another time, I had a cyst, and I went to the doctor, even though I didn't have that much money, I thought it would be a better experience, but I still had to pay far more money, and I didn't know about other programs.
El diagnóstico del doctor era que ocupaba una pequeña cirugía para sacar el quiste. Yo pensaba que iba a de veras ocupar la cirugía, y no tenía cómo pagarla. Creo que era lo que más me preocupaba.
The doctor diagnosed me and told me that I would need to have a small surgery so that I could take out the cyst. I thought that this was going to be very expensive, and it really worried me.
No ocupé la cirugía, ya que yo sola me piqué con una aguja, y ahora sé que pude haber ocasionado una infección u otra cosa peor. Lo hice sin pensar, pero aquí estoy.
I didn't end up needing the surgery because I actually poked myself with a needle, because I wanted to avoid any problems, and I know that that was not the best decision, but here I am today.
Sé que no soy la única persona que desconoce los programas de descuento, ya que hay muchas personas que pasan lo mismo que yo.
I know I'm not the only person that doesn't know about these programs.
Para mí es muy importante informar a las personas sobre estos descuentos, ya que ellos van a tener la confianza de asistir a las clínicas para pedir esa ayuda y para no automaticarse.
For me, it's very important to share this information with my community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Inez Gonzalez, followed by Carmen Sanchez. Put it down. You know what? Why don't you go ahead, let her tell you, then you stay by the mic, and you stand by the mic and let her tell you off the mic.
¿Quiere usted leerlo y yo lo leo en inglés?
It's probably easier for you, but Rosio, you stay by the mic then.
Okay.
You still want to say?
Yes.
Muy buenos días. Mi nombre es Inez Gonzalez. Soy de Oaxaca. Hablo zapoteco. Hoy junto con mis compañeras venimos del proyecto Mixteco.
Good morning. My name is Inez Gonzalez. I'm from Oaxaca, and I speak zapoteco. Today, with my coworkers, we come here from the Mixteco Project.
Yo soy promotora de salud y doy información a nuestra comunidad que no tiene alguna cobertura médica sobre el programa de descuento en el condado.
I am a health promoter, and I give information to our community that doesn't know about programs or aren't able to access healthcare, such as the discount payment program, is what I share.
También estamos haciendo una encuesta a nuestra comunidad indígena para saber cuáles son...
Sé que no soy la única persona que desconoce los programas de descuento, ya que hay muchas personas que pasan lo mismo que yo.
I know I'm not the only person that doesn't know about these programs.
Para mí es muy importante informar a las personas sobre estos descuentos, ya que ellos van a tener la confianza de asistir a las clínicas para pedir esa ayuda y para no automaticarse.
For me, it's very important to share this information with my community.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Guadalupe. Okay, Inez Gonzalez followed by Carmen.
Would you please pass on to her? That was very helpful testimony to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have the Spanish version, but I can send you the English version.
Thank you. Gracias. Okay. Inez Gonzalez, followed by Carmen Sanchez. You know what? Why don't you go ahead and let her tell you, then you stay by the mic. Stand by the mic and let her tell you off the mic.
¿Quiere usted leerlo y yo lo leo en inglés?
It's probably easier for you, but Rosio, you stay by the mic then.
Okay.
You still want to say?
Yes.
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Inez Gonzalez. Soy de Oaxaca, hablo Zapoteco. Hoy junto con mis compañeras venimos del proyecto Mixteco.
Good morning. My name is Inez Gonzalez. I'm from Oaxaca and I speak Zapoteco. Today with my coworkers, we come here from the Mixteco Project.
Yo soy promotora de salud y doy información a nuestra comunidad que no tiene alguna cobertura médica sobre el programa de descuento en el condado.
I am a health promoter, and I give information to our community that doesn't know about programs or aren't able to access healthcare, such as the discount payment program is what I share.
También estamos haciendo una encuesta a nuestra comunidad indígena para saber cuáles son sus necesidades relacionadas a la cobertura médica.
We're also conducting a survey to see what are the community health needs for the indigenous community.
Hoy voy a hablar un poco sobre mi experiencia durante una visita a la clínica del condado.
Today, I'm going to speak about an experience that I had when I went to visit a county clinic.
Antes de ser promotora de salud, yo fui a la clínica del condado.
Before I became a promotora, I went to visit the county health clinic for a problem that I had.
Cuando yo fui, no me ofrecieron el programa de descuento aún ellos teniendo ese programa. Como yo no sabía del programa, tampoco pregunté y tuve que pagar una cantidad muy fuerte.
When I went to the clinic, excuse me, I was not told about the self-pay discount program, even though they do have it, and so I actually ended up having to pay two hundred and fifty dollars for one visit with a primary care physician.
Ahora trabajando como promotora de salud, sé que tienen el programa de descuento, pero en la clínica no me lo ofrecieron.
Now that I'm a promotora and I know more, I know that they do have a self-pay discount program at that particular clinic, but they were unable to offer it to me.
En mi experiencia, pienso que es mejor que los trabajadores de la clínica pudieran ofrecérselos a los pacientes que visita en cada clínica para que otros pacientes no tengan la misma experiencia que yo tuve.
In my experience, I think that it's best for the staff at the clinics to be able to share with all of the community members who are eligible for this program about the self-pay discount program so that other people don't have to go through what I did.
A pesar de que yo hablo un poco el español, aún así no tuve esa información.
And even more particularly is that I speak Spanish, and I was not able to get this information.
Yo sé que hay otros miembros de la comunidad que no saben español y tampoco saben leer ni escribir, mucho menos el inglés.
I know for a fact that there are many members of my community that don't speak Spanish. They don't know how to read, they don't know how to write in Spanish, and much less English.
Es difícil obtener esa información si no sabes que existe el programa y si no te lo dicen en tu lenguaje.
It's difficult to obtain information about these programs if it is not available in your language.
Y por eso me da gusto estar aquí con personas tan importantes como ustedes a que nos escuchen cuáles son las necesidades que hay en la comunidad.
And that's why I'm very thankful to be here today in front of very important people who are going to listen to all of our concerns about what the community needs.
Por ejemplo, nuestra comunidad que trabaja en el campo diez horas diario para sacar a su familia adelante y con un sueldo mínimo que no nos alcanza para ir a un doctor o para una visita médica o un chequeo físico.
For example, many of our community members are working out in the fields ten hours a day just to have, put food on the table, but they have very minimum money, so they can't afford to see a doctor, to get a physical, to get a specialty care. It's very difficult for those areas.
Y por eso hoy estamos aquí para que escuchen nuestras preocupaciones y esperar que se pueda ayudar a más familias que en verdad ocupa el programa.
And that's why we're here today to see if you can listen to our concerns, and we hope that we are able to together help more families access the self-pay discount program.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Thank you. Okay, Supervisor Bennett?
I have a question for the translator.
Yeah.
Rosio.
And, Rosio, he's got a question. It looks like you have these comments all translated into English that you're reading from?
No, I'm reading the Spanish one to make sure I don't forget anything, but I translated in my head.
Wow. All right. Thank you. I was just going to say.
We have two copies.
It's difficult to always listen when you're going back and forth, so if anybody can provide this in written form afterwards, it'll also be helpful. That's what I really want.
And I want to thank Rosio too. I met with them before because they're translating from Mixteco to Spanish to English.
Yeah.
So that's really difficult. That's really a couple of translations there.
There's a lot of translations.
Mixteco, then, right. So, great. So I have a couple. Let me see. We need Carmen Sanchez, followed by Alejandra Garcia, the last two speakers.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Carmen Sanchez. Junto con mis compañeras venimos de la organización Proyecto Mixteco, y soy una de las promotoras más.
Good morning. My name is Carmen Sanchez. I'm here with my coworkers from the Mixteco Project, and I am a promotora or community health worker.
Hoy en este día estamos aquí para hablar sobre la comunidad indígena o otras comunidades.
We're here today to talk about the indigenous community and other communities.
Estamos haciendo una encuesta para saber cuáles son las necesidades que se necesitan para todas las personas que ocupan todo tipo de ayuda.
We are conducting a survey to see what is it that the community needs in regards to healthcare and other areas.
Hoy como promotora de salud, hablo de las experiencias que he tenido y he visto.
As a community health worker, I want to talk to you about an experience that I've had personally and also that I've seen from other community folks.
Hace poco me encontré una familia que está muy limitada al español y tampoco no sabe leer ni escribir. La señora enferma.
Recently, I connected with a family that doesn't speak Spanish very well, and they can't write either, but the woman, the mother, was very sick.
Y el esposo de la señora fue a un hospital de emergencia y no obtuvo ninguna clase de ayuda, y ahora está haciendo un pago de cincuenta mil dólares.
So she got very sick, and the lady and her husband went to an emergency hospital. They weren't unable to access any help as far as discount programs, but they had to pay or they owe fifty thousand dollars.
Creo que en el hospital debería de haber más promoción de descuento.
I think that there should be more promotion about the charity care programs or self-pay programs at these particular hospitals.
Pero es importante tocar este tema y con un sueldo mínimo, y con tres niños es difícil pagar tanto dinero y más cuanto solo el esposo trabaja, y por eso estamos aquí para que escuchen las necesidades de las personas trabajadores en el campo que no tienen recursos para pagar tanto dinero.
This is a very important topic for me, especially because I know this family doesn't have very much money, and they have three children that they need to care for and they mostly focus on, and especially because only the father works at this moment because the woman is sick, and so I really want to be able to share this story with you because it concerns me how much they're paying.
Y también que haya más flexibilidad de descuento.
I'm also concerned about flexibility with the self programs, self-pay discount programs.
Las personas tienen miedo al dar tanta información por todos los rumores que se escucha de inmigración.
The community members are very afraid to give their information because of all the rumors around ICE and other related agents.
Y también otras de las razones es que muchos no saben de los programas de descuento por falta de información, y los empleados de las clínicas no están bien enterados o no quieren dar la información correcta que ocupa la comunidad.
I'm also very concerned because a lot of times the clinics either don't promote the self-pay discount program or other programs, but also because sometimes the staff do not share that information with people who may be eligible for this.
Por ejemplo, esta familia que está en esta situación de no poder pagar esta cantidad de cincuenta mil dólares y todo por no tener la información del descuento.
For example, this family that I'm connected with, who is now owing fifty thousand dollars to the hospital, and they don't have, they weren't able to be given any information about the charity care, and so I just want to thank you for your time.
Muchas gracias por su atención.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Alejandra Garcia.
Hola, buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Alejandra Garcia. Yo soy promotora comunitaria de salud en Proyecto Mixteco y hablo el Zapoteco. Hoy le contaré un testimonio mío del programa de descuento.
So, good morning. My name is Alejandra Garcia. I'm a community health worker from MYCOP. I speak Zapoteco, and I want to talk to you about a testimony of mine.
Hace ya muchos años, en el dos mil cuatro, tuve un embarazo espontáneo, bueno, pero salió en el tubo, y fui al doctor por una hemorragia fuerte. Visité al hospital de Ventura, en la cual yo no tenía medical ni sabía del programa de descuento.
In two thousand four, I was pregnant, but I had a spontaneous abortion, and so I had to go to the doctor because I also had like hemorrhage, and so I went to the Ventura County Hospital where I actually did not know about the self-pay discount program or the charity care program.
Yo tenía dieciocho años en ese entonces, era menor de edad, pero el doctor que me atendió fue muy amable conmigo y me dijo que no me preocupara porque había programas de descuento y medical de emergencia y de embarazo.
So I was eighteen years old at the time, and the doctor was very kind to me, very amicable. He told me not to worry because there were programs like the self-pay discount program and the charity care program and the emergency medical that I was able to get some help.
Ah, por lo tanto, me tuvieron que hacerme una cirugía de emergencia que costaba mucho dinero, como diez mil dólares en ese entonces.
It turned out that I did have to have a surgery that was an emergency, and it cost about ten thousand dollars.
Ah, pero el doctor fue muy amable. En todo momento me dijo que todo va a estar bien. Allí mismo en ese entonces había la trabajadora de descuento, y apliqué al programa de descuento y califiqué.
The doctor was very kind to me, like I mentioned, and at the moment, he told me that everything was going to be okay, that there were programs that were able to help me, and the administrative staff were able to help me to apply for the self-pay discount program.
Me dieron una tarjeta amarilla y muy buenos descuentos. La otra parte le cubrió el medical de embarazo, pero todo estuvo bien.
I was able to get the yellow self-pay discount program card, and it helped me pay for a portion, and another portion of it I was able to get it covered because I was pregnant, so was the medical emergency.
Yo agradezco al programa de descuento porque de mucha ayuda me ayudó mucho, y también pienso que hay personas que no conocen el programa de descuento pero igual necesitan esa ayuda.
I'm really thankful for the self-pay discount program that has helped me and many people that I know about, even though they don't have full scope medical, this has helped many people.
A mi punto de vista, yo que hablo Zapoteco y también conozco muchas personas de diferentes variantes de idioma indígena, yo pienso que sería bueno tener alguien de idioma indígena trabajando allí en el programa de descuento para que puedan dar información a la comunidad inmigrante indígena.
In my point of view, I speak Zapoteco, and I do know that many other people speak other variants of an indigenous language, and I really, I want to promote the fact that it's really important to have language access and for there to be interpreters that speak not only Mixteco and Zapoteco, but the specific variant, because there are different variants in the language.
En este caso, yo hablaba el español y me pudieron atender, pero hay muchas personas que no lo hablan en la comunidad en general, que no hablan español.
In this case, I speak Spanish, and they were able to help me, but I do know that there are many people from my community that don't speak Spanish, and it would really be helpful if they could have an interpreter.
Sorry. Muchas gracias por tener el programa de descuento, y en nuestro grupo que estamos, las promotoras y yo, pues nos da mucho gusto en poder apoyarlos, ayudar a promover el programa de descuento y fortalecer el programa de descuento a la comunidad.
Thank you so much for your time. We really enjoyed doing access to, or promoting access to the self-pay discount program, and we're open to working with you. Thank you.
Gracias y que tenga un buen día.
Gracias, Stan. Thank you, Rosio, for an excellent job. By the way, you know, Rosio, I want to thank all of them. That's a really good ending, you know, to the presentations, because we want to thank our doctors and Dee Poopa and the yellow card and so forth, but I know that I talked to Dee a little bit and to you, but I think it's important that we do provide the training, and I think it's important that we do convey the message and that there is a discount, and also that a lot of people might have the opportunity to choose their doctor by having the grid information to disposal, and I think it's important that we convey that information to the public, and thank the ladies for their testimony, and you for an excellent, you know, excellent translation. Going from Spanish to English is very difficult, right off the bat.
Thank you.
But, and Dee Poopa, I just want to thank her because I heard nothing but good about you. When I met with those folks and to say how great you were and how great the system is, all we need to do now is convey the message to them that there is a self-pay discount and for the people to understand that, and that way we can have more people utilize our medical system, you know, so. But I want to thank you for that, and Dee, I'm sure you probably want to say, or maybe Johnson might want to say additional words.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Rosio.
Thank you, Supervisors, Chair, CEO Powers. I want to thank, just like Dee said, the team that put the policy together. It was, a lot of effort went into it in collaboration with the CEO's office. If you compare this policy that we have in our county, perhaps it is the most comprehensive and very carefully crafted policy compared to a lot of other counties who do not have a policy. They treat on a case-by-case basis. So we are very proud of the policy that we've put forth with a lot of effort. Now, that is not to say that there isn't still work that we will have to do in collaboration with CBOs and MYCOP. We've been meeting with MYCOP quarterly. Rosio is new, and we're very happy to be working with her. She's easy to communicate with, work with, and carries the message very clearly to the community. And I do want to thank the promotoras because you guys are really the ones who are out in the community treating patients, seeing patients, raising their concerns, bringing their concerns up, so those concerns will continue to be addressed. So we want to acknowledge them and their work. So, having said that, we will continue to work with CBOs in getting the message out, working with MYCOP in getting the message out. HCA staff will be trained across the agency in this new policy so they can communicate that with patients as they come and register through our clinics. And our outreach, the HCA outreach, which as many of you know is almost every weekend we're out there. Last year, we had two hundred and sixty-seven events that we participated in, and in every event, we do share information about the self-pay discount policy.
And you're doing a good job because I see Gonzalez, and she's at every single.
All two hundred and sixty events.
I don't care where I go, she's there, you know. In fact, I'm walking by, I don't even see her, she's tapping me in the back, I'm here.
So sometimes she's at one event in the morning and later in the morning, later in the afternoon at another, so really, really appreciate her work, but she, at every event, she also passes this message on. Now, please note that there is community fear, as has been shared, and in our meetings with MYCOP, we have shared with them that we're in the business of providing healthcare, and our doors are open for anybody that walks in. I understand in our meetings with them that, yes, there has been difficulty where the staff may not have had the depth of understanding, but I think now we will take this policy, train everybody, so everybody's on the same page when it comes to providing information.
Johnson, you do have the information in Spanish and Mixteco, right? Both Spanish and Mixteco, do you have that information?
Yes, that's what we will, now that this is going to be approved, we will provide that information both in Spanish and Mixteco.
Mixteco. All righty.
Supervisor Bennett? Can you provide it? I thought Mixteco didn't have a written language.
It's a verbal.
So, yes, so we have interpreters available in different. So, yes, so we have interpreters available in different clinics to provide verbal services or telephonically they can be accessed, and Mycop also assists in that area. And Dee may have some things to add if there are any other questions, I'll be more than happy.
Come over here. By the way, once she comes up, there's, Supervisor's right, they don't have a specific language or dialects, but we communicate verbally, you know, and victorially too.
Good afternoon, Supervisors.
Good afternoon.
Mike Powers. My name's Adriana Gonzalez, I'm the Community Outreach Manager for the Healthcare Agency, and I was just also mentioning that we have several community health workers that join us for these various events. We try to bring together a team that's very specific to the outreach event so that we can deliver that service in an equitable fashion for all.
I told you she does a good job. Good job. Anything else, Dee?
The only thing I would add is that we will be translating the documents in Spanish, as well as our goal is that no matter what clinic or hospital a constituent presents at, that the message is delivered consistently in a consistent manner. We also plan to create and post some posters so that as a constituent walks in, they know what programs are available.
Great.
And have the applications readily available. The way it currently works is when you apply for self-pay out in the clinics, there's a potential to leave that clinic with your self-pay card. Folks can always apply after they receive services as well, I just want to note that because that's important. So, after they receive a bill, they can contact the Patient Accounting Department and we can apply them to self-pay.
Great. Okay, and I just want to thank the promotoras and Rosio and you and...
Thank you.
Johnson, good job. Motion? Okay, and second is, Michael?
Just while we're voting on this, I just wanted to say to the translator, that Supervisor Zaragoza said it is difficult to do what you just did in terms of those rapid translations, so thank you very much, appreciate it.
Michael, I was just going to say thank you to Johnson and Dee and John and everybody for putting that together, but also to the promotoras. Gracias por venir aquí, agradecer. So, thank you very much.
Can translate that?
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you for being here and speaking here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Please vote. Oh, that's approved. Thank you so much. Gracias. Okay. Alrighty, our next item is Item 61, Authorization for Human Resources Director to Establish a Full-Time Equivalent FTE Regular Position Allocation for Deputy Sheriff and a One-Time FTE Regular Position Allocation for the Sheriff's Service Technician to Within the Service Police Services.
Exactly. Good afternoon, Chair Zaragoza, Supervisors, Mr. Powers. Assistant Sheriff Bill A. U. representing the Sheriff's Office this afternoon, and like the Chairman said, yes, we're asking for your Board's authorization for the Director of Human Resources to establish one full-time deputy sheriff allocation and one full-time sheriff service technician allocation in the sheriff's police services budget in Camarillo. We're also asking for your approval to add a deputy sheriff and sheriff service technician position as well as two vehicles to the Camarillo Police Services contract, as well as authorization for the auditor controller to make the necessary accounting transactions. As you know, the Sheriff's Office provides contracted police services to the city of Camarillo, and the city of Camarillo has grown fairly steadily over the last 10 years to the tune of about 9%. We've added one, two deputy positions since that time period, and the service levels have increased to a point where our priority calls have gone up by 16% in the last two years, and seems to be a regular occurrence that our priority calls are going to continue to increase in that community that has some ongoing and future planned growth for some time to come. So, we feel and the city leadership agrees that adding these positions and vehicles is going to go a long ways to allowing us to continue providing the high level of services that we do in the city of Camarillo.
Thank you, Supervisor Bennett. Okay, so, we got a motion?
It's always great to see the...
Supervisor Foy.
It's always great to see the city wanting to keep their levels, which you guys are, it just kind of reflects on you. If you don't, it's hard to do what we require to do, so I'm glad to see they're willing to support that, so.
It is, thank you. We certainly don't want to scale back the type of services that we provide.
Yeah, yeah.
Keep doing the good work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to Sheriff. Alrighty, so that is approved. Our next item, 62, is this Approval of Response to 2016-17 Ventura County Grand Jury Report entitled Ventura County Children and Family Services and Human Services.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, members of the Board, CEO Powers, Matt Carroll. It was very fortuitous that our Camarillo, I'm a Camarillo resident, our Police Chief, Dave Murray...
You feel very safe, huh?
There was a little bit of excitement in our neighborhood this morning. My wife was frantically texting me about, and Dave was able to give me some information and calm things down in the neighborhood, so...
Good job.
I was pleased to see them in the boardroom here. So, agenda item 62, this morning recommends your Board approve two draft responses to grand jury reports on Ventura County Children and Family Services and Detention Facilities and Law Enforcement Annual Report. It also recommends your Board receive and file a copy of the Sheriff's Response to the latter report. And with regard to that, although we distributed to your Board the Sheriff's Response earlier as part of your draft review of the draft materials, we inadvertently omitted that document from the public agenda process, so it's being handed out here today. And just for the public's benefit, in summary, the Sheriff concurs with the findings and recommendations within the Detention Facilities and Law Enforcement Issues Report directed towards it, but goes on to note the extensive resources and programs that are in place for those housed in our county jails with mental health issues. Likewise, the draft response prepared for your Board this morning concurs with the finding that there is a large number of mental health individuals afflicted with mental health issues in our jails, but also points to those strong resources, departmental participation by behavioral health and others in working toward providing services for those within the jail. It also notes your Board's strong support for the development of a new medical facility and mental health facility out there at the Todd Road Jail. Regarding the Children and Family Services Report, primarily, the major item in there is it disagrees, the draft disagrees with the finding that there are excessive caseloads in the Children and Family Services area primarily because of the extensive additional staff recommended by our office and wholeheartedly approved by your Board over the past several years in there, and the caseloads are noted in there that have been brought down significantly. So, there is disagreement with that. Throughout the remainder of the report, there's a partial disagreement with some of the findings in there, but the majority of recommendations are being or have been implemented, such as those for additional resources for the Children and Family Services Division. And with that, I know Mr. Fisher's, excuse me, Mr. Zimmerman, the other Barry, is here to answer any questions on the Children and Family Services Report, and we have folks from our offices as well.
Supervisor Bennett.
A question for Mr. Fisher Zimmerman.
Same haircut.
Yes, it's always a frustration when a grand jury report just doesn't have accurate information in it and stuff, and so, you know, they say we have high caseloads and we disagree and we go, our caseloads are... What can you, can you shed any light on how they came to a conclusion so different from our?
Yeah, this was, the process was a little bit unique this year with the grand jury than in past years. In the past, they've been pretty open with the department and meeting with us and engaging to have a dialogue. This report came out unknown to me and unknown to many people. They apparently only pulled in like, you know, a handful, I think, under five individuals to talk to, and that was the extent of their investigation. So, I think they were limited in a perspective of a few employees versus getting a broader scope of what was really happening within the department.
I've been on record when I've talked to the grand jury, and I just want to go publicly on record here, saying that the grand jury actually hurts their credibility when they don't vet their findings properly. You know, if their findings are accurate, then they shouldn't be worried about vetting them, but they have this need to sort of keep it secret, and then they have wrong information and then their credibility is completely gone, and they'd be far better off fully vetting it to get that proper information, you know, at least so they have accurate information. They could still bang away, but they ought to do it with accurate information, so I just wanted to get that set.
I like that comment. I think that's great, you know, disvaluing, because at the end of the day, there's nothing wrong with the second set of eyes taking a look at something, just make sure you have a clear understanding of what it is, and if you come up with some good ideas, I mean, Matt goes through this, and a lot of times, see, that's a great idea, we agree with that, so it gives them a lot of credibility, yeah, you're right.
I wish the press would do that, too.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. Any additional questions, Matt? What's the pleasure of the Board? Motion?
You know, Linda, I just heard on the news coming up here today, if it wasn't for...
Second, please vote.
...the government and all the stuff that goes on, the press, at 75% of what they report nowadays, they wouldn't have anything to report, almost.
Please vote.
We are their meat and potatoes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, our next item is Item 63, this Approval of General Fund Loan from the County Ventura General Fund to Ventura County Water Works District Number 16, Piru, the amount of $2 million and the authorization of the auditor controller to process the necessary statutory transactions.
I didn't know that Mr. Powers has so much change in his pocket.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, Supervisor Foy, Supervisor Long, Supervisor Bennett, Supervisor Parks, and CEO, Mr. Powers. For the record, I am Michaela Brown, Ventura County Public Works Agency Director of Water and Sanitation. I am here before you today to request approval for a loan from the County General Fund on behalf of Water Works District 16 in Piru. Water Works District 16 is a sanitary district that encompasses 300 acres and provides sanitary services to over 700 residents of the community of Piru. The original Piru wastewater treatment plant was constructed in 1974 and was replaced in February 2010. This replacement was required because the Los Angeles Regional Quality Control Board mandated in 2004 that the district upgrade and expand its wastewater treatment plant. The $17 million plant was funded from a variety of sources, including an $8.6 million grant under the Federal American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, a $5.4 million state revolving fund loan, and a $1.6 million general fund loan from the county. The district anticipated being able to repay the general fund loan from connection fees from, at the time, expected development of over 300 dwelling units that had been approved for development in 2008. Shortly thereafter, the housing market crashed and the subsequent economic recession resulted in halting these development projects. As the housing market has begun to recover, development is expected to result in new 266 units by 2022. These additional housing units are projected to generate $1 million in sewer connection fees and an annual increase of up to $241,000 in sewer service revenue. However, until these units come online, the district is experiencing significant cash flow problems and doesn't have sufficient cash to fund the current debt service. In fact, two years ago, the district received a $500,000 cash flow loan from County Service Area Number 34 in order to meet its end-of-year financial obligations. As a result, the district is seeking to restructure its debt by consolidating two existing loans from County Service Area Number 34 and the County General Fund into one 10-year County General Fund loan at the county's treasury pool interest rate. Once the loan is approved, the district commits to providing annual updates to the CEO's Office and Auditor Controller's Office on cash flow projections, development updates, sewer service rates, and capital projects. On July 25, 2017, the County Financial Planning Committee unanimously concurred with the recommendations to support this loan. This concludes my presentations. I'm standing by for your questions. Thank you.
Any questions, Makina?
You heard the comments earlier this morning, I'm sure.
Yes.
Can you also talk about what, in that meeting that we all had, you talked about housing and all the other things that are going on, and how those pieces will pay this loan back?
Right, so the original plan for the wastewater treatment plant, once you build a new one, you want to size it for what you think your future growth is. So, I think the planning that was done was good and reasonable, rational planning. The connection fees, when new development occurs, help pay for that new infrastructure that is required as a result of the increased load on the systems. And as a result, the County General Fund was almost like a bridge loan to help cover the costs until those connection fees were collected by the district. And as a result of the downturn, we never collected those connection fees. So, the plan now is where the development is progressing a little bit slower rate than originally expected, but we have crunched the numbers and feel fairly confident that if those 255 units come onboard, we'll be able to pay most of the loan back from those connection fees, and then the increased revenues will help us to be able to continue making the payments to the state revolving fund.
So, those fees will pay our loan back?
Correct.
And then the regular 250,000 years, I recall, fees will pay their ongoing debt service, correct?
Correct. And right now, the revenues that we get pay the operating costs. There's just not enough money left over because we're operating a plant that's larger than the current population can really support.
And so, our assumption is that, we had a track map today of 91 houses, and then there's an assumption there's something else out there for another 160 or something like that?
Correct, correct. The development was approved and there was rezoning that happened in 2008 that was approved by the Board, that if all of that is built out, would actually result in nearly 400, what we call unit equivalents, which is what we base kind of our rates on and our revenues on. Right now, we base this projection on the 255 because of the map that was the track approval that was brought to the Board today, and then we're expecting another 156 that we're working with a developer, both with the planning and the district to try to help them. Hopefully, that will come online. We feel pretty comfortable with that prediction.
So, there is more, though, but the other, what'd you say, 125 or something on top of that would then even add more to help get rid of some of that debt because I think of this ongoing cost situation that we're talking about. So, I know Mr. Bennett probably has some other comments on that, so thank you.
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
My first question is, do you have in your head or readily available what the rate increases have been the last five years?
Yes, there have been 10% increases over the last 10, three years.
10% each year?
10% each year. However, the rates are paid through property taxes, so it's an annual amount that we get revenue from when they pay, when the property owner pays their property taxes.
So, that creates a cash flow issue?
It does, as well. So, we have certain debt obligations at the end of the year, we don't get our cash influx until the beginning of the next fiscal year, and that's part of the challenge that we've had all along. Even with those rate increases, Piru is still 31% lower than what is paid in Fillmore and 12% lower than what is paid in Santa Paula. Part of the financial plan is to continue another two years of 10% increases and then a 5% increase. I have spoken in front of the community and let them know, and they understand, they're very grateful that this new plant was built because the old one, speaking of odor, caused a lot of odor problems and was too small for even the population at that time.
So, as I mentioned earlier, I just want to repeat that here and try to clarify it some. I'm supportive of this, of going forward with this, but with a lot of reservations at the same time, because I don't think there's any way we're going to shut off connection to the sewer plant. So, if we end up needing to have more rate, bottom line is, if these homes don't get built, I think at some point in time, we're going to have to raise rates to help cover this cost. You can't keep transferring this to the public taxpayer in terms of doing that. What I'd be concerned with is, right now, everybody's grateful, it's really amazing how fast people take it for granted and then say, I don't want a rate increase, and you get a Prop 218 vote, we don't have the rate increase and we don't have, you know, the revenue coming in to both operate the facility and pay ourselves back. So, I do want to speak to making sure we keep the rate increases. I'm happy to hear that, you know, we've got the rate increases scheduled for two more 10% rate increases, and you may need to go further than that, but also to communicate to the community that, you know, a Prop 218... to the community that, you know, a Prop 218 thing has, you know, would have consequences in terms of further cooperation, you know, from the county, but that's my concern as we go forward. I know that we've had developers ask for waivers or reductions of those connection fees, and I just think our policy should be absolutely not. This is not, this kind of service needs to be paid for by the people getting that service, not transferred to everybody else, and that should be a non-starter for, everybody just needs to calculate that in when they're making their calculations. It's a challenging place to dispose of sewage, and that's why it costs so much money to be able to pull this off. So thank you for letting me sort of go on about my thoughts with this.
Yeah, this.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. One thing, too, is I know that the $2 million that are coming, you're also paying other debts off, right?
Correct.
So it's not all $2 million to run this, this system?
Correct.
Why don't you give a little?
So we're consolidating approximately 1.7 million, and that's the first thing we're going to pay off, is the CSA loan and the old general fund loan that we hadn't started making payments on yet.
Right.
And so the, there'll be additional debt, but it'll be, and part of it is, we're not going to take it right away, we're just trying to get ourselves, it's just now we'll be able to tap into, that's why I think the loan request is up to $2 million, so there's another about 250,000 above what we currently owe that we're requesting. We're not requesting $2 million in addition to the debt we currently have.
Right, right, so I think that was good. And I like to hear, I didn't know the other part, that when you were talking to Supervisor Bennett, that it's in the tax, so you don't have to worry about people not making their payment, they're looking for money, it's just, you know, it's a little late, but at least it's guaranteed to come, yeah, so, yeah.
And I was in a meeting, too, and I just want to share with you that this, a loan, you know, too, you know, and that's going to help us with the long-term financing. And I like the property, the taxes being paid on the property, should be the rates being paid on the property taxes. This is the way we do it in El Rio, and it's a lot easier to pay it as a property tax than on a monthly basis, you know, which is easier for the family to work with. So I think this is a great program, and I think you're doing a good job, and I think it's going to help the people of Pyro.
Thank you.
So we need a motion for? Okay, we got a second, please vote. Okay, that's approved. Now we're going back to board comments, Supervisor Parks.
Did we not have a hearing on the LCA? Did we continue that?
We continued, yeah.
Good, I have something to talk to staff about. Can Supervisor Zaragoza, would you go first, and I'll pull mine out here?
Or Supervisor Foy, you're okay? I'd like to adjourn in memory of those folks on this list, and I have a couple of items I'd like to share. I was at the pleasure the other day of, I don't see Mr. Pettit here, but we went over to open house over on Eastman, so I'd like to congratulate the superhero, Mike Pettit. And I know Mike Powers, for his outstanding money building that is more technologically efficient, that remind me of the high-tech Silicon Valley tech firms that I see on TV and read about, and it just, it's going to save us a lot of money, it's really great, it's going to protect us from, we saw some of the good work he's doing and some of the cybersecurity that he's putting together, and I think he's really going to save a lot of the agencies a lot of money. If you haven't gone out there, it's just an outstanding, outstanding.
I want to congratulate on us not having to pay for it, somebody else paid for it.
That's right, that's absolutely, but they, I just want to congratulate the IT, you know, agency for outstanding, outstanding building, efficiency, work that they do for, efficient work that they do for our agencies, and of course, our constituency. Also, you know, I was over at Plaza Park and Oxnard, as I mentioned before, with Ocotean Sister City Biannual Reunion, sharing 53 years of art, cultural business, and ideas exchanges with the US and Mexico. It's been a very positive partnership between our friendships every single year for the last 53 years. Additionally, I went over to the Stand Down at Ventura National Guard Armory, a three-day event where they provide medical, dental services for all veterans, especially our homeless veterans, and also some Superior Court services, hot meals, clothing, county services, Red Cross services, for all our veterans. So I especially want to thank Rod Cotman from the Public Works Office and his team, and also David Ferby, Andrea Gonzalez, AC Outreach Program Specialist Rosa Gonzalez, our CEO's office, our community liaison, and about 200-plus other volunteers that really did an excellent job there, you know, for veterans. And they also provide, believe it or not, music and movies and great meals, too. I didn't get no meal, but it looked great, I didn't have time to have a meal. So I want to thank the Oxnard firefighters and Oxnard police officers for collecting and donating over 100-plus sleeping bags, you know, for our veterans. And also, I attended the Harry Berry's Benefit Dinner to help fight cancer. This is a relay for life. It was well-attended by many, many people from across the county and out of, you know, out of the county, too, people from Los Angeles. My understanding that afternoon, they collected about $25,000 to fight cancer, really.
You said Harry Berry's?
Harry Berry's, off of, Harry Berry's off of Vineyard, close to the JJC. What a beautiful place, you know, you walk in there, have you been there before? It looks like Disneyland, it was just 13 acres of just beautiful, organic-grown strawberries and vegetables, and I came out of there very, very healthy, eating other organic food, it was really, really great. Also, I attended the Oxnard Salsa Festival, there was thousands of people there having a great time in Oxnard, downtown Oxnard, and Oxnard has a lot of festivities, and there was a lot of people there that they were enjoying themselves. So that's all I have.
And I found mine, too. I was able to, with, I know at least Supervisor Zaragoza, go to the Ventura County Stand Down at the Ventura Armory, and just, again, so impressed with so many people coming together to help the homeless veterans, and watching the Superior Court have these expedited hearings for homeless veterans that have some tickets that they can then actually get community service and work it off right there, and so they really can leave with a clean slate, and I just think that is wonderful, and also that they are receiving brand-new clothes and brand-new shoes, and we've heard how our sheriff's department and our public, our district attorney, others have worked to get donations for that event, and it's just great to see it coming together. I brought with me Lisa Saffinelli with the Westminster Free Clinic, because this is kind of a mobile medical clinic, too, that they have, and just to see what, how others are doing and share that information. They had dental chairs and people, homeless veterans, getting dental service right there. And then also, we had our mobile medical Winnebago out there, I'm sure that's not what they call it, but it's just nice to see everyone coming together and even all the way down to getting haircuts, and they had ladies there doing tailoring so that the clothes would fit, you know, if they, if the pants are too long, so it's just very, very thoughtful, and I know very much appreciated. Also, went to one of the best speeches I've heard yet at the Ventura County Taxpayers Association, and that was given by our CEO, Mike Powers, a great job, Mike. And then stopped in at a community health forum that the Behavioral Health Department's doing for looking at innovative solutions, funding recommendations from the public, and I just really appreciate how they do go out to the public. And finally, the Somas MAC, we had, we have these many MAC meetings we go to, or I go to, and the Somas MAC meeting had 50 people approximately in the audience, and they were all there because one of the residents in Somas is looking at finding a way to get broadband service in Somas. It's too small of a community to get the Time Warner to come do it, and so these individuals, homeowners, are looking at how to get it for themselves and seeing if we can work with the county, but it was pretty impressive to see them all come together over something where, you know, if their children want to have, some of the schools require that you have internet access and do your reports on the internet, and they actually have to go down to the Camarillo library to do their homework, and they can only have a certain amount of time, 20 minutes or something, on their computers there, so that's just one example of, we've all gotten to the point where we almost feel like internet services are right, but there are still many areas in our county that don't have the broadband service, and it would be nice to see if we can pull this off and be an example for others and be able to use what the county resources have, too, to try to get this almost a right out to the public, too. I have no closing in honor of, and with that, I end my comments and wish you all a wonderful August break.
Michael? I think your Chair Zaragoza. Yeah, one of the things, I, at the IT open house, the building is so modern and high-tech looking, it's good for recruitment and retention, and one of the folks told us a story about how somebody from Apple came in and said, I want to work here, and they did, and they do. So makes a big difference, appreciate your board's support. The VCMC hospital license, they got their certificate of occupancy, so patients will be moving in August 20, and I know Matt and Joan Araho and Kim, everybody's, all the moving parts, I guess CDPH came in, they had no findings, no findings to open a new hospital, it's almost unheard of. Yeah, right, exactly. Hopefully they're listening. We've got a nice award for our energy programs, Institute of Local Government, it's the Beacon Spotlight Award for our greenhouse gas, Superior Board, the county's greenhouse gas reductions and sustainability breast practices. This afternoon at 3:30 in Santa Barbara with Assemblywoman Limone, I'm going to be chairing a meeting that she's asked to convene regarding AB 1250, and that's the limitation on contracting out services. And then, let's see, just real quick, American Cancer Society Gala, August 5 in Moore Park, and MYCOP, August 5, also at the Oxnard Performing Arts. That's it, thank you.
But Brian, as we have, closed session is next, but before we go to the closed session, let me share, we had the MYCOP people to speak, and Johnson talked, I just want to share real quickly, we got some information here that in Oxnard, sick children, 52 percent go to Las Islas, Magnolia, Mandalay, and Ventura County Medical Buildings, 52 percent of the children go there. And also, the, for the sick adults, 38 percent go to the county to Las Islas, you know, which I think is extremely important.
The people, they started, this is. This is from the MYCOP survey, they're just adding up the percentages of all the, that's where they go.
So they really utilize the, the system a lot, and also, for sick adults, they go to the Las Islas, and also the Magnolias, about 18 percent plus of the sick adults go right to those areas, so we're really providing quite a bit of service to the MYCOP community and those folks. This is from their survey, I just wanted to share that. Okay, so are we going to have any announcements, Leroy?
Mr. Chair, we do not expect any announcements.
So we'll adjourn from closed session. Okay?